Perfect, thank you.
You can start if I start.
Sorry.
If I start, it's okay. Can I start? Okay.
All right, I bring this meeting to order at 6:03 on November 18, 2025. Before we begin, I would like to remind everyone that the board appreciates the support of stakeholders and the input at our meetings. However, it is important to note that the board meeting is not a meeting of the public, but it is a meeting to conduct the district's business in public. Everyone should have a chance to express their opinions respectfully within the guidelines the board has established for its meetings so that the board is able to conduct the meeting efficiently and effectively. During the meeting, there will be time for public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items. Public comment is only conducted in person. If you wish to speak, please submit your written speaker card with the executive assistant. Members of the public may observe the meeting via NUSD YouTube channel or in person at the Newark City Council chambers. Spanish translation will be available at seven. Public comment on closed session items, do we have any? Thank you. All right, tonight we will be discussing 2.1 pursuant of Government Code 54957 Public Employee Discipline Dismissal/Release Complaint. 2.2 Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Anticipated Litigation Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code 54956.9 Two Cases Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 Updated Conference with Labor Negotiators, Employee Organizations, NTA and CSEA. All right, and with that, I dismiss to closed session.
Board meeting guidelines. We will keep our focus on the best interest of our students. We will work towards that future, learning from the past. We will stay focused on our goals and avoid getting sidetracked. We will build upon the ideas of others and look for common ground. We will paraphrase for understanding. When we have a difference of opinion, we will debate the facts of the situation and avoid personal criticism. We will address processes, not persons. And finally, we will respect differences. We will never dismiss or devalue others.
Great, thank you so much. Approval of the agenda, is there anything that needs to be pulled from the agenda this evening? Superintendent Bakar, any members?
A correction on, and that is in regards to our contract with our CBO. There has been an update on that, let me just get that number here, I apologize. There was a correction to the date of being January 1st to be moved to January 12th. And then there was a correction on, it mentioned there was a three months health and welfare benefit in the end of the severance. And there was, next to it was the number 12 spelled out, they should have said 3 spelled out. So that correction's been made.
Great, thank you so much. All right, could I have a motion to approve the agenda with the item corrections in 12.4?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the aforementioned corrections.
Thank you, and a second?
I second.
All right, thank you. And if we could all vote, please, sorry. There we go. Okay, thank you, and that passes with six eyes. All right, student board member, could you read your report for us, please?
Okay. Good evening, board members, executive students, and New York community. As we head into Thanksgiving break, Newark Memorial is holding Mental Health Awareness Week, with daily activities during lunch and supporting students' well-being. Events include affirmation notes, stress relief crafts, and a school-wide flower walk challenge on Friday, encouraging our students to get outside and practice mindfulness over the break. These activities have been well-received, especially as students approach the end of this semester. Our annual camp food drive is underway, with donations going to my old life community center. Students are competing through the third period classes, and participation has been pretty strong as we work to support local families before the holiday season. For NMHS athletics, they're also running a grocery gift card drive to support NUSC families in need, by collecting gift cards through November 19th. We appreciate the community's support in helping students and families facing food insecurity. Several volunteer opportunities are also opening up to our students this month, including supporting our Lincoln Elementary's Winter Wonderland event, and serving as science camp counselors for BGI and Lincoln Elementary. These opportunities do continue to strengthen connections between our high school students and the younger learners in our district. For our senior news, graduation preparation continues with the cap and gown distribution and the final poetry session scheduled for November 19th. But so far, that is all. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much. Employee organizations, NTA?
Good evening, board members and community members. So, my name is Mr. Lannan, I'm an English teacher at Newark Memorial High School. I'm also the vice president of NTA. I'm here tonight to speak about the upcoming presentation and possible vote about the new tutorial plan at Newark Memorial. First off, I do appreciate all of the effort that Karen and Terry and the department chairs have put in to bringing back a tutorial period this school year. I know that many people are involved in this process, and they've spent a lot of time planning the new tutorial period. It recently came to our attention that the district would like the teachers' union to plan and sign an MOU this Thursday regarding the expectations of the tutorial period. But, I'm gonna be completely honest, the union's not going to sign an MOU this week in regards to tutorial, because there are many unanswered questions about the new tutorial plan, and it feels like it is being fast-tracked to the detriment of the students. The new tutorial does not address many of the core concerns staff members had about PAWS last year. It is the union's contention that this plan will fail to improve student success at Newark Memorial, and ultimately, like PAWS, this new tutorial will be unsuccessful and a waste of precious instructional minutes. The new tutorial program looks exactly the same as PAWS, with the only difference being a 20-minute homeroom and advisory period on Mondays. We still have 40- to 45-minute tutorial periods on Wednesdays and Thursdays, in which kids get to choose which of their teachers to work with. The expectation is that those homeroom students will be cohorted and carried over into next school year. That is an additional class with additional student contacts. That is a significant change in our collective bargaining agreement, which limits teachers to five teaching periods in a day. And it would also lead to every teacher getting paid overage, because the contract limits daily student contacts to 155 students per teacher per day. In order for the new tutorial plan to work, staff members would have to forfeit those contractual agreements. Basically, it would be more work for the same pay. That's not to say teachers are greedy and not open to a homeroom model. In fact, many teachers have expressed a strong desire for such a model. But, we would only change our contract if we feel like the outcome justifies the changes. And that outcome would have to be more student success. As for the Wednesday and Thursday portion of the new tutorial plan, it looks exactly the same as PAWS, even using the exact same attendance tracking as previous years, leaving several unanswered questions. How will we measure the success of the tutorial program? Like, how do we justify the loss of instructional minutes for a tutorial program, or tutorial period? How is a new tutorial plan going to reduce the DF rate at Newark Memorial? What will be the consequences for teachers that do not follow the expectations of tutorial? Here's a fun fact, a lot of teachers had their doors closed during PAWS last year, when the district and the union walked by and observed teachers. Which led to teachers like myself, who always had their door open, having 40 students in a class, in a class that was packed full, which is incredibly inequitable. If we use synergy and let students choose their classes, what happens when there's a substitute teacher who doesn't have access to synergy? What happens if students are on their phones or watching Netflix? What are the consequences? What is the purpose of a 20-minute homeroom on Mondays? What if students are all done with all their work and have straight A's? What are they supposed to do? These concerns have been brought up, but have not been addressed. Furthermore, the new tutorial plan would create three different bell schedules in the middle of a school year. The union supports having the tutorial period, but we want to create a plan that will have long-term success and is not doomed to failure like PAWS was. We need to slow down, create this plan more thoughtfully, and make sure it's going to be a success. If we have to wait until next school year to successfully implement this new tutorial, that's okay. But right now, the union is not in support of the new tutorial plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, CSCA? All right, moving on to recognitions and celebrations, we have school spotlight on Newark Memorial tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, NUMA.
Good evening, President Jones, Board of Trustees, and Executive Cabinet Members. My name is Kristi Palamino, NUMA President. November is the time for our elementary schools to host early dismissal at 1:05, so our teachers can meet with their families. This moment is a pivotal moment in our scholars' lives as it builds the foundation for teamwork for the teacher and family to support our scholars for the entirety of the school year. In November, we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Heritage Month, also known as Native American Heritage Month. This is an important opportunity for our community to reflect on the vital role of the first and original stewards of these lands we call the United States, as well as the active and vibrant role our Indigenous community currently has in our lives. What makes Newark truly special is the rich diversity of the communities and how we choose to meaningfully celebrate them. By embracing those differences, we create a culture of inclusivity that resonates beyond our schools and provides an opportunity to come together and grow. We are proud of all the ways that we will stand Newark together in November and always. At the end of this week, the NUMA board would like to appreciate the tremendous work and effort of our colleagues, and would like to wish everyone a safe and restful break with our families and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to skip you. All right, Newark Memorial Spotlight.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share the highlights from Newark Memorial and highlight efforts for this year's school year as we increase student outcomes. Newark Memorial has a diverse student population, with a total enrollment of 1,306 students. This represents an exciting wide range of backgrounds, cultures, and experiences. Before our WASP visit, we had the opportunity to update our mission statement, highlighting our efforts to empower students with the skills required for succeeding in the 24th century. Our vision statement highlights how students will be successful during their four years in high school and demonstrate the dispositions necessary in their college or career experiences while giving back to their community through being self-confident, self-disciplined, successful leaders. We also implemented a learning theory that guides our everyday work. These five principles demonstrate how students will reflect excellence while at Newark Memorial High School. Our learning theory shares how nine virtues, ranging from integrity, collaboration, and responsibility, embody how Newark Memorial educators demonstrate their commitment to Newark's youth. These upcoming slides will illustrate student performance data. Last week, the California Department of Education released updates from the dashboard. These updates are contained here within. And, I'm all over the place, pardon me, I wrote stuff all over the place. Since the development of these slides, we found two data errors on slide nine that have now been corrected data. All right. Over the past four years, English Language Arts and math scores have remained flat. In October, staff conducted a thorough analysis of these results, engaging through in-depth discussions and began to develop commitments and action plans. We are making meaningful changes to improve these outcomes, which will be highlighted in later slides. Our indicators increased for English learners. We maintained our suspension in graduation rates and declined in English Language Arts, math, and college and career readiness. We gained momentum with our graduation rates, resulting with a 93.9% graduation rate. These reflect our highest results since the 2019 school year. We made solid gains with our English learners last school year. And in 2022 and 2023 school year, 31% of our English learners increased their proficiency on the annual LPAC assessment, as indicated by the red circles. Last year, we increased this to 37%, with an overall increase of 6%. This outscores the district's results by 2%. These results are also very significant. Starting at the bottom of the 2024 and 2025 graphs, with the light purple color, we reduced the number of English learners from 20.9% to 16.4%, who would decrease at least one level on the LPAC assessment. What has most improved is the top purple colors at the top. 11.3% of English learners increased by at least one level. This improvement is aligned to one of our current goals, reducing the number of long-term English learners district-wide. Next, let me share some advanced placement information for you. The percentage of AP exams have exponentially increased over these past five years. Students who have earned passing scores have doubled, and this percentage demonstrates steady improvement over time. This slide above reflects the overall exam data by subject during spring 2025. Please note that we are, I believe we're the only site in the tri-cities that offers the SAT and possibly the PSAT. Our numbers of the PSAT participants have increased over the past three years. Our scores are greater than the state and United States averages. And for our SAT, our number of participants continues to increase during each test session, which we're offering twice annually. As you can recall, after our WASP visit last spring, we received several recommendations for implementation. These are the top four recommendations, and this year, we are in the process of implementing all of them. These slides share our current efforts to implement WASP's recommendations. Last week- Last week, several staff members attended a Solution Tree Professional Learning Conference, and we are excited to start research-based PLCs campus-wide. Later this evening, you will hear about our new tutorial model. It consists of a, it consisted of collaboration of dedicated committee members these past few months. We are also in the process of selecting new core novels in all English classes, which have been over twenty years since an adoption occurred, they're now legal and can drink, so twenty-one years. Next slide. While a committee has been established to select a diagnostic to measure student growth and progress during the school year, several teachers agreed to pilot iReady for ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade while we bring a final recommendation to the board. A recent baseline was taken two weeks ago, and as you can see, we have work to do. Currently, we have six hundred and fifty-one ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders who are below grade level in reading at one or more levels. The English department is joining back together on December fourth to learn about their students' results and to discuss strategies to increase student reading skills. Following are some pictures, the next three slides are pictures of the kids since school started. And I will say thank you, and I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, um, questions? All right, Member Block?
Uh, thank you very much for your presentation. It's great to hear an update on Memorial and all the things that are going well, and then to continue to work on areas of improvement. I was really curious to learn a little bit more about that iReady pilot. So you said that there's like a portion of teachers who have like opted in to participate in that pilot, is that correct?
Yeah.
And then how how are they feeling about it so far? Like, what have been their reflections on like its usefulness to this point? Like, how are they using that data in their instruction? Like, do you mind just elaborating a bit more on how that's going?
It's very premature at this point, but it's in its infancy. It's just one of ever several pieces that we're looking at. So it was a little bit lengthy for giving the assessment. There were some interesting situations because it is a program that's offered from kindergarten through eighth grade. And so the kids, many of them were sort of like, we're sort of over this. But so we gave it, give it the old college try, give it a shot and see how it's looking. So the next steps are following up and saying, okay, of this data that's been provided, how can we use this data and use it further to look at data to drive instruction? But we're also looking at other other pieces, other programs as well.
Got it, what other?
We're not gonna invest too much time in just, I mean, we're just grazing right now, seeing what's out there.
Sure, okay, what other like, like other possibilities is the school exploring?
Uh, we met with NWA, I think it was yesterday. And I believe STAR was another one.
Okay.
So we're, we're, we're looking around and see what we're the best bang for your bucks gonna be.
Got it.
Ultimately, I will say, um, the state test is very difficult in terms of if you're, how students' performance comes out. What are you gonna do with that data? There's not a whole lot of data that's shared. They're very, they keep it very close to the chest. So it's, you're only as good as your, I would argue, I always, this, I would argue that you're only as good as your benchmark test score. If your benchmark shows where your kids are, if it's, as long as it's a good test and it's aligned to what the assessments is gonna be. If you can, if you can guarantee that that's gonna give you a good judgment where your kids are at. And not just to have the data, but to be able to say, okay, if they're not, if they're falling short, where specifically in the strands can we improve? You got a good program. So we're making sure that as we speak to these various programs, we want to make sure that that's something that we can use. That just like with Solution Tree last week, you know, if we're gonna do something, we need to do it right. And because, like I say, the state's very limited in how it wants to share data, we need to be, we need to work smarter, not harder.
Sure, so for that iReady pilot then, is it gonna be like, like, three times a year administration in order to track growth?
NWA is, I think the other one's four, I'm not positive on that. But I mean, like I say, this is, we're just, we're just, we're on, we're doing online dating right now, so we'll see how we go.
Got it, thank you for sharing.
Member Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, for coming and presenting. And and I, I want you to know that that these remarks are not directed at you personally, it's more at the issue that we face. And I, and I know it's, it's been a tough one and an intractable one, but if we just look at the scores on the surface. So if we look at our performance, ELA, fifty-five percent below standard, right? At math, at twenty-five percent below standard. And and those scores are, we're not really seeing a lot of movement right over the course of your time series. And and I think the important thing to to recognize is that, I mean, essentially what we're saying is, is that there's, there's, I'm sorry, I misspoke. What what it's saying, right, is is that fifty-five percent of our kids are meeting our ELA standards, right? And twenty-five percent of our kids are meeting our math standards. But what that, but what that is, is, you know, I guess maybe eliding is that that means that forty-five percent are not meeting our standards.
Correct.
Right, so we're, we're, we're almost, we're at a D, basically. And in terms of math, seventy-five percent, so we're definitely an F at that level. And I, and I think the challenge and the thing that we, well, and actually, before, before I go to the challenge, if we look at iReady and the pilot that you just did, it looks like the numbers are even worse. And and again, granted, it's a sample, and so we don't know if it's, if it's a random sample and exactly how representative you need to look at it. But what we read from the iReady is that at least seventy percent of our entire student pop, or I shouldn't say entire student population, but the sample, we're scoring at least one level below state standards, right? So when you added up all of those, so this is not good, right? And and I think that one of the challenges that we face in education is that we keep kicking the can down the road, right? And it starts from the very earliest stages and, you know, at pre-K, at kindergarten, at elementary. And we just keep thinking, well, you know, we will just promote these people, we'll just, we'll socially promote them, and somehow it will work out. But it ends up actually getting worse and worse, and you're now at the, at the tail end, right? Which, where it's incredibly difficult to make adjustments at that point, and the adjustments need to sometimes be draconian, right? If we're really gonna see results. But the thing that that I think that we need to wake up to is that, quite frankly, after high school, there's not much more kicking the can down the road. And so they can go to college, all right, and and maybe they'll get in. We're gonna talk a little bit about, about our, our online learning in a minute, and this is kind of connected to this. But and and certainly there are issues at the, at the higher, higher education level. But what we're seeing, if for people that are watching the news right now, the current crop of graduates that are coming out of college, they have a much higher unemployment rate than other, than other categories of people. And and that gap and that, and that chasm is growing. And and part of it is because of a skills issue, right? And we're seeing the skills issue right now, but we're just saying somehow this is gonna get solved. But and and it's, but it's not. And where the can ultimately stops, it stops at the employers, right? And so if the, if the, if the kids don't have the skills, they're either not gonna get the job or they're not gonna keep that job very long. And and if they're trying to go out and serve a customer, the customers are even more brutal. Either you're gonna deliver to me exactly what you, what I want, or you're fired, right? I'm not gonna even talk to you. And so I think that we're doing our kids an enormous disservice. And again, none of this is directed at you personally, it's a systemic issue, but it's a systemic issue not only for our state, but let's just take it at the microcosm here. That, so we as a district, I think that we somehow need to sort of take a stand on this. And and when we established our goals, we said initially, well, let's just try to kind of get things started and let's set some modest improvement goals in terms of state tests. And and we've been making progress. The high school, though, you know, hasn't, and it's because it's more challenging, right? So a lot of the issues that we inherit. But reason I say this is I really think that we need to think about kind of almost a moonshot approach to how we're gonna solve our issues at the high school. Because there's not any more runway after this. And and I think that just these modest improvements, they're either not happening at all or they're, they're, they're just marginally improving. And so, again, I think that we need to be working with you and the teachers and everybody to figure out how we reinvent education at the high school level. Because otherwise, our kids, our kids are not gonna get jobs or they're gonna get replaced by AI. And that's just the brutal truth. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. I want to go back to something that you said regarding the iReady. You made two, two points that I want to bring up. One is, it was a small population of the school.
No, no, it was all nine through eleven.
Oh, it was all nine through eleven, okay, I apologize. But the other thing that you said, which I think is actually even more important, and coming as an elementary school in the district for so long and using iReady for umpty ump years. It was great in elementary.
Sure.
But I heard what you said about maybe it's not necessarily the appropriate program from the burn-off standpoint, you know? It's like, they've used this for eight years, and now they're gonna have to do it again. That they're gonna feel that way too. So I really, I'm looking forward to hearing about the other particular programs and seeing if maybe we get a better result from those because it's not just the same old, same old.
Sure.
So.
I, you know, I think we're, I think where we're at, we have to consider some things. I mean, I can't speak to what's going on at the elementary, middle school level. You know, as somebody who's been who taught at elementary, middle, I'm not gonna go into and saying, well, if middle school did their job, middle school says if elementary did their job, we're not going there.
Right.
But the reality is, we can control what we can control at the high school. I think, I think there's a couple of things here. Part of it is, is the culture of the school, looking at and embracing a lot of those strategies that are coming from School Solution Tree. Solution Tree's been around for, I don't know, has it been twenty-five years, thirty years?
Long time.
Okay, it's been there forever, okay, older than some of these kids. And and the reality is, there's a lot of dynamic things going on with Solution Tree that, I've been there, I've been here for four years. At this point, I'm like, it's surprising, it's shocking for a lot of people, okay? I've been here for four years. The things that I've advocated with the staff and with the kids as far as looking at, hey, let's look at test scores this way, let's think smarter, not harder. Let's look at pause and certain angles and through certain lenses and such. We took, what was it, seven people to the training, we took seven people to the training. Within an hour, they're, I mean, it wouldn't even took an hour, they all had the, oh, I get it now. You know, it's, it's, when you, we have a problem with, when we work in Newark, we see what's in Newark and we don't really see what's outside.
Yeah.
It's easy to be comfortable here, and I get it, and that, people do what's comfortable for them. And what I'm gonna argue about it is, at the end of the day, probably what's, it's a good thing and a bad thing. The good thing with NCLB was, it kept us accountable, we had a score in which we could look at, how can we improve? We had to, we had to meet those, those score targets. But they also provided you feedback on, these are the areas that you need to grow on, and it was, it was pretty good. The problem was, the kids could really do a great job in taking a multiple choice test, but when it came to being critical thinkers, they weren't hitting it. And that's where Common Core came out. It's like, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna go back to base, it's gonna come up with Common Core. I mean, Common Core to me is just, you know, I, I, Common Core is trying to correct what NCLB didn't, didn't fix, I guess. I was proponent of that, that back then, I like the state, I like the assessments that way, it's easy, it's clean, you know what you're working with and all that stuff. What I think, where I think we're at and where we need to go moving forward is a couple of things. And I'm gonna ask you guys of this, I'm gonna ask you, you know, I don't have any answers, but I want you to think about this. One is, and Solution Tree said this, in order to have a well-functioning PLC, a PLC is not a meeting. A PLC is, is, it's a culture. It's looking at data a certain way, it's collaborating with your colleagues, it's using that time, it's not, I just got, I gotta go to the PLC, no. It's time, it's dedicated time. And that also comes back with, and I always talk about the pyramids and John Wooden and all that. What are your non-negotiables? What is your organization about? What are those things thou shalt not do? You know, I mean, and I like say, let's go Old Command, Old Testament on that, because bottom line is, we gotta do it for these kids. But at the same time, that you have to have that intervention piece. I'm not a, I wasn't a fan of pause. I theoretically, I liked it, and I've said that all along for the last warriors, theoretically, I like it. Solution Tree's talking like, hey, you know what? You need to have that intervention time, and they're even advocating like where it should be and such. They're even asking, saying that it's not club time, it's not ASV time, it's not counseling, it's strictly academic. You're doing academic and academic only. How novel of a concept, yeah, that's what it should be all about. But at the same time, I recognize these kids, we need to be creative with the way we're engaging these kids. We need to, and I would say this, little kids, I don't know what grade you, you're at upper elementary, I think. Little kids, it's easy, they wanna please you, they're pleasers. Middle school, you can still please, they're still gonna wanna please you to an extent, as long as they, you know, you're my teacher, my yay, my teacher. They wanna please you, you get, you get the piles of presents like this. High school, you might get an apple, okay, probably half-bitten. But at the end of the day, the reality is, we need to find ways to motivate these kids, we need to give them incentives. And I'm gonna argue this way, if you wanna see test scores go up, you wanna see grade GP, grade point averages go up, it's, it's, it's being smart. And I'm just gonna say this, I, I would argue and I would advocate for merit-based privileges for students who demonstrate every quarter, so they can work to the quarter. You, you hit gold, silver, bronze levels, like the old middle school Renaissance level, based on GPAs, you can go off campus for lunch, it's a privilege. I know people are like, oh, God, he's saying it. You think how fast those kids are gonna wanna say, I wanna get off campus? And the kids that screwed around are gonna see their buddies, say, I'm smarter than him, I can do better than that. And they're gonna be intrinsically motivated through this extrinsic virtue that they're gonna suddenly start stepping it up. Not to mention, if you wanna take the CAS test, and we say, hey, look, you give me, you juniors, you come back here, you give me a test that says, and I wouldn't give them every day, I'd say, if you're gold, if you're, I'm making this up, you're four point oh above, you get to get off campus three days a week. If you got a three five to three point four nine or whatever it is, you're gonna get off two days a week. Three oh to three four nine, you get one day a week. And if you got perfect attempts, I'll throw in an extra day for you. And it's scripted days, and it's all based on a stupid sticker, and we monitor the gates. Then, if you wanna say, you're a junior, you meet or exceed, and you give me that test, and now we're gonna say, let's put the rubber to the grind and say, now show me that you can be, meet or exceed that standard, you watch how fast those kids are gonna be suddenly gonna be stepping it up. We could tie that to the LPA, we could tie it to all kinds of things. Now they have that motivational piece to do that, we can, five days, you can go five days. So you're senior year, hey, five days, baby, you get to go off campus for lunch. Now you blow something, you do something off campus, you lose all that privilege. I don't have a problem with that, thou shalt get it, and we can take it back. But that's the quickest way to raise, that's how I've raised test scores, it didn't cost a thing, letting kids go off campus. I know that's an unpopular thing, but I'm just gonna say, that's something, I would say, think about it, but you get back what you emphasize.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's your thing.
Any other questions? Yeah, Member Hill? Oh, sorry, just looked at my list again.
So, let's do it.
All right.
Right? So, 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 I mean, seriously, can we organize some type of, of committee, some type of, of, of group that is gonna look at this in spring semester and come back with a plan, a merit-based motivational plan?
Not for spring, but we.
No, no.
Kids and the staff and the parents.
Yeah, so you're gonna have, you're gonna have this, your, your extended analysis study session in the spring for implementation in fall of twenty twenty-six. And and the only thing I would suggest is that you include some students on that, in that discussion, because again, if we're trying to motivate the students, we wanna have the student voice, and obviously, we need the teacher voices as well. But, you know, can we, can we do it? Let's give it a shot.
I think so. Hey, by the way, your largest club on campus right now is NHS, you got, last I checked, a hundred students. That's your largest camp, that's your largest group, those are kids with a three point oh and above. Those are kids that signed up for a club based on their grade point average, doing volunteer work for the community and such, so that's something to be proud of. You've got kids that care. Yeah, that isn't everything, but it does certainly take care of the extrinsic things that kids want. And if you keep it merit-based, kids are gonna strive for that. You, we set the bar up here, it's here, you rise to the occasion, we're not gonna dip it, we're gonna, this is where you come and we work with you.
Right, but I think that one thing that's important to think about is that there's the old saying of that the perfect is the enemy of the good, right? And and so let's just throw a bunch of things at it, right? And some of them are gonna stick.
Yeah.
Right, but this could be one, maybe it's gonna stick, maybe it's not, but let's, you know, let's get started.
Okay.
All right, Member Aguilano?
Mr. Murphy, thank you for coming out and, you know, presenting today. I was looking into the CAS, the CAS results, two thousand twenty-four, ninety-three percent graduation rate. Now, as far as the California Dashboard Results, it shows that the college and career results are from green, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, yellow, and the change declined. Have we looked into why has the, the numbers declined over the past couple of years?
I would argue, just speaking straight off the cuff, two, two factors there. If a student takes an A through G and they're high school diploma eligible, if they have a D in a core subject area, they may be able to graduate from high school. if they have a D in a core subject area, they may be able to graduate from high school, but they're not A through G, which is gonna kill that, that college and career piece. The other piece is, element is, you got the gentleman over here for, from ROP. There's, and there's the, the two kinds, there's the completer, and then there's the introductory and the completer, or it's the concentrator and completer. If the kids don't take the right two together, that'll kill it too.
Now, as far as, uh, taking the correct
Sequences.
Right. Would that be more involvement, like a committee, a group of individuals, counselors, be together looking into this, or I do see that the college and career program specialists, we don't have one right now, is that correct? Would that be playing a big role in this?
Not especially, um, because what they're going to do is they're going to support the counselors in terms of the A through G applying to four-year colleges and bringing the colleges in, into watch, to talk to the kids. But they're also gonna bring the industry professionals to come in and recruit kids for, you know, various trades and such.
As far as just having like the dual credit, dual enrollment, how are we navigating that with our community colleges? And I understand, you just mentioned, um, ROP. But how are we taking and looking into and giving additional support for that?
So we currently have two different courses. We, our number's doubled in the amount of kids that are taking dual enrollment from previous years. We traditionally have only offered one section of Chicano Studies. We now currently offer, the kids came in, they, we, they demonstrated they wanted four Chicano Studies. We were only able to get them two. We offered them at zero period and first period, but we were also able to offer sociology at zero period and first period. Currently, sociology is not gonna be able to be offered, or the, we're working with, with Aloney on trying to secure something. We might have something for first, but we're working on zero period. So that, that part is, is being worked on at the moment. In terms of other programs, we have been exploring, I know, uh, Dr. Cliff and I have talked about some, um, looking at things moving forward. What kind of pathways are we offering? What kind of, um, which, what I found interesting with Cliff will say, I don't know if Cliff will bring up later, but what's interesting is each school, I thought it was like, okay, we have ROP, everybody's, this is what the kids are interested in. Each school has its own unique community. And with that, there's certain things that'll fly in certain school, schools and not in others. Even within Fremont, you got five schools, but each of them have their own unique identity, and they each have something that they want. We, we have the opportunity, and we're, we're looking at developing a pathway, a four-year pathway in which the kids have connectors or completers with us that will connect, extend out to Aloney. But also looking at if, once we get one really nice and clean and, and, and sharp, looking at, looking at offering other opportunities. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Staff?
Thank you. I just wanna thank Dr. Murphy for your, um, presentation here this evening. One of the things I love was the idea, we need to throw out a few more things and see what sticks. Um, I love the idea of a moonshot. I'd like to be able to explore that a little further and come back with an idea that I've been bouncing around and thinking about to help inspire, especially around, uh, the steamrolling that we've been talking about, and see if I can't maybe throw out an incentive to maybe, um, help both the high school and the middle school, um, around that, that thought pattern. So, um, I did something in a former district, I think you'll like it, and I love hearing the idea of a moonshot, so, let's do it.
Member Thomas.
Okay. Speaking of college and career ready, um, our A through P, I mean, our A through G program, that's our default curriculum. What can you tell us about what we are doing to try to improve the number of our students? Because certainly I think we are enrolling them in the required courses, but they're apparently not completing them, or they're not completing them with a C or better grade. So we only have forty percent of our students, even though that's our default curriculum, only forty percent are graduating A through G qualified. What are we doing?
They're, they're completing the courses because they wouldn't be getting the diploma, but what they're not doing is receiving a, a letter grade of a C or greater for some, for, for some kids.
Well, there's also evidence that they're not all taking the required A through G courses. They, they'll take a year of Spanish or French and then not take the second year. Um, so some of that data, it, you know, just says we are not having our students take the full three years of math, not all, not all of them or not enough of them. Are, are you working on that?
Yeah, we've been tightening it up. Um, you, you all wanted, um, a certain, what's the way, what's the way to put it? How kids come to us from the junior high up, and what does that pathway look like for them, moving out, going up to the height, to the college level as far as, uh, and by the way, I forgot to bring up, uh, we do offer Calc BC and, um, Calc, what's that other calc? What's BC and the other one, what's the other one? No, no, the other one from that Goldsmith's teaching, that, the fancy calc.
Math Analysis?
Math Analysis, we're offering math analysis at the university level, that the kids are taking through Goldsmith, my apologies. We are, we are following that, that one that has been, had been outlined by the district. We are, we're still examining it, we're, we're trying to tighten things up.
I, I can also just say, I, I think one of the reasons, the rationale behind this is the high school has not had an adoption in many textbooks in years, two thousand, two thousand six, before Common Core. So if we're not even giving our students what they need in regards to fidelity of curriculum to make sure that they're ready for college and career by still having English novels that are over twenty years old, what disservice have we done to our students and to the staff to not provide them what they need? So it is very much on my radar that the curriculum needs to, we need new adopted curriculum for many subjects to make sure that the materials for A through G classes are exactly at the rigor that they should be, but when they're at two thousand, two thousand adoption, we're far from it.
And I'll say, you know, for what it's worth, you got a really talented staff that have been working with curriculum in spite of what they've been given. Have been pretty creative, it's about trying to do what they can with what they have. Curriculum, I mean, you're, you're only as good as what your, what books you have that you can provide support with the kids. Yeah, I.
My correction is multi-variable calculus.
Okay, yeah, it's still fancy calculus, but multi-variable calculus.
Is that a course this year?
Yes, the second semester.
Second semester.
Oh, second semester. What did they take the first semester?
BC.
Oh, that's right, BC is, is
It's through Aloney College.
Okay.
But it's our, our professor, our, our, uh, yeah, our teacher's teaching it, yeah.
I thought, I thought BC was one full year of calculus over two semesters.
Traditionally, it is.
That's AB, AB is
Both are.
And?
However, because we fell short on numbers, um, because we were, we were establishing a certain level threshold that we wanted our classrooms to be, to be filled. Um, working with Aloney, we, they were graciously able to work with us so that we can still offer the course through our, through our own teacher instead of, um, having them house it with their own professor. Yeah. And actually, it benefits the kids, because now they're getting college credit instead of taking the class through us that's, you know, so they're, they're getting the college credit out of it.
Great. Thank you so much. Really appreciate your time.
Sure thing.
All right, uh, moving on to, uh, public comments, non-agenda items, Ms. Parks.
Good evening. I just wanted to bring to your attention that at the November fifth meeting, you had a timeline that was in the superintendent report, um, that was for the super, the new superintendent search, and at tonight's meeting, it said on this timeline, board meeting, open session, board to discuss and recommend, search firms to interview. Um, I don't know if you've changed this timeline, but this is what was at the last meeting that you said you were going to abide by and was gonna be published on the website, and so I just wanted to let, to mention that, that is not on your agenda, and if you could publish perhaps an updated version of what you're actually going to be doing, the timeline. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, let's see, we have, um, some other agendized, uh, ones, and I'm, so I'm just gonna ask if these people, if you wanna speak now, or you wanna speak at the time of the agenda item. Um, Daphne Fong, you wanted to speak, um, on eleven point two. Do you wanna speak now, or do you wanna wait until the item? Okay, terrific. Come on up, hon.
Hello, good evening, esteemed members of the board, superintendent, and staff, and the Newark community. My name is Daphne Fong, and I am a current junior at Newark Memorial High School. I'm here to speak about the importance of our pause period and why having this tutorial time matters to students. So as a student taking some challenging courses, pause gave me valuable time during school day to get organized and complete work. Another major benefit of pause was that it gave us time to make up missing assignments and tests that were missed due to absences. And some of my teachers used it for extra help, study sessions, review time before big tests and AP exams, which were all really helpful to attend. And recently, I had to miss a couple of days of school, and when I returned, I struggled with finding time to make up my tests. And without pause, without that tutorial time, I ended up having to stay after school, which ended up causing more inconveniences as I had, um, my job as well. So, and I understand that not everyone has the same privileges of being able to stay after school to make up these tests due to other responsibilities, and it causes inconveniences to those that miss school, whether it's due to sickness, unforeseen circumstances, or sports. Our counselors also use pause in the past to host college presentations and information sessions. And without that period, many of these now occur during class time, which is very inconvenient for both students and teachers because it could lead to students missing important instruction time. And I understand that the, many of the issues there were with pause system last year, but I believe that that system could be improvised and improved with some changes, instead of, to minimize these problems, instead of taking it away completely. So I would like to emphasize how important this tutorial time is for us students, both academically and practically, and I hope that the board will recognize the value of it to us students. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is it Precious?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, honey, I, I couldn't read it.
Good evening, City Hall Board and Newark community. My name is Precious Sumagaisai, and I'm a student from Newark Memorial. I hope to have persuaded you into keeping our schedule planned for tutorial by the end of my speech by giving you insight and my experience with a similar prog- program pause. I've been told that the reason why this period was removed was because of students taking advantage of this period by skipping. But please don't be quick to remove the tutorial period if ever people fail to show up. If they do, proceed to take advantage. All I'm asking for is a better way to hold these people accountable. Some of my ideas include taking away privileges, such as their ability to participate in school celebrations and events. But I suggest that we keep the schedule because please remember that majority of students will benefit from this tutorial period. I was a freshman and a sophomore when PA period was still in action, and yes, I did find problems with students being on their phones. But truly, I think that with the phone ban, um, implemented next year, I think that phone usage won't be a problem, and it'll certainly make a difference in the classroom. Most of my classmates use their time wisely by doing work or studying, and benefits like extracurriculars, clubs were able to host meetings and events that students could sign up for and be active during school. And this period was used for one-on-one time with teachers if ever students needed further help with their, with the curriculum, and teachers provided time to prepare students better academically. And I know that, um, last year, I had seen how pause helped me with my grades and motivation last year. I've also talked with, um, Fremont students who have a similar program that is in, in effect for their schedule, and they've told me that they were signed up for the period with this app called Five Star. They've brought up how they were, um, given rewards for their great work and, um, signing up for oh, classes, like, oh, they were awarded for their great work and, on attendance and academics, and it was as simple as dip and dots. And I understand that there might be problems regarding with implementing this tutorial period. I understand if, um, this would take place next year with a better plan for teachers and students. But thank you for giving us time to speak, um, out during this presentation, and I believe that if we continue to keep the schedule, I'm confident that it'll teach teacher, it'll teach students valuable lessons such as accountability, managing time wisely, and discipline. I know you've heard a lot from us today, and please let these speeches persuade you into, um, seeing how it's important in keeping our tutorial period. Thank you, and I'll see you guys tomorrow for the commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see, Brian Foster, do you wish to speak now or at the time of eleven three? Okay, you'll wait? Okay, thank you. All right, um, we are now moving on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. If you could please move to the next slide. So, with our California Dashboard release, uh, last week, um, we have shared this out publicly, there are seven indicators that measure school and district performance. This includes English Language Arts, Math, Chronic Absenteeism, Suspension Rates, graduate, graduation rates, and then the College and Career indicators, and then some local indicators. Uh, the goal is for the district to perform in the green and blue colors. NUSD shows growth in four areas, including English Language Arts, which is yellow now, Math, which is yellow, English Learners, which is green, and Suspension Rates, which are green. Uh, we are concerned with the indicators that we did not show growth, or that we declined, and as we dive deeper, we'll be looking at that data. Next slide, next slide. Um, we were recently awarded a fifteen thousand dollar Food Resilience Fund grant. Um, I wanna thank staff for putting that together. This is a response to what happened recently with the federal shutdown. Um, on November first, SNAP benefits were frozen for the first time in over six decades. Um, Alameda County Rapid Response Food Resilience Fund provided this one-time infusion of support to our district. Priority is given to those, uh, serving children, elders, immigrants, and people with disabilities, as well as organizations partnering with schools, community college, and of course, our community institutions. Um, funding will help strengthen Shilling School-based food distribution that we already have in partnership with our Tri-City volunteers and our expanded emergency grocery support, and ensure that reliable access to nutritious food for students, families, and community members, um, is there. Next slide. Looking at our ELOP Extended Learning Opportunities Program, a question came up at the last board meeting, and I wanted to be able to respond to that, because I think it's important to talk about, uh, those funds. So the grant for the ELOP is a once, is one of the areas that our district worked for the twenty-five, twenty-six to ensure that the anticipated ELOP funding would be self-sufficient for the future. In the past, it's actually used a bunch of different funds to be able to help offset some of the costs that went with it. Some of it was one-time COVID funds that were being used, sometimes it was other grant funds that was helping to support it. Um, and we wanted to make sure that moving forward for twenty-five, twenty-six, it was a self-sufficient program. And this year's funding for twenty-five, twenty-six ELOP, um, included a rate change, and this was significantly reduced the district's allocation. Um, in this scenario, we qualified for rate two. Um, but this was a significant lower dollar amount than what we initially anticipated. We shifted to a fee-based model to support families with after-school care who did not qualify, um, underneath the UPP. At that point, in twenty twenty-five, our P two, NUSD anticipated receiving additional funding because our UPP increased, which in part is reflected in the carryover funds of three hundred sixty-four thousand one sixty-nine, as noted in the unaudited actuals. This funding was received in July of twenty twenty-five. Last year, NUSD contributed additional funds from LCAP to supplement the ELOP funding shortage for Thing Together Contract and for the School Nutritional Snack Program. There was approximately four hundred fifteen thousand two hundred eight dollars that supplemented last year's dollars. So any carryover should be returned back to our LCAP and to other budgets that may have contributed to last year's programs. Uh, we are working with auditors to ensure that this is done with fidelity. Any carryover returned to LCAP, we'll go back to the committee for discussion. Um, and looking at our ELOP twenty-four, twenty-five, and looking at what the carryover, um, was that we received, there still is a shortage of fifty-one thousand zero thirty-nine that was contributed from other funds. So I wanted to share that information with you. Next slide. Next slide. We did receive two applications in regards to the superintendent's search firm update. One was with Leadership and Associates, the other one was with McPherson and Jacobson. We have reserved City Hall for interviews on December 6th of this year. And it would be up for discussion, I suppose, for you to be able to give me some direction and input whether or not you wanted to stick with the two that we received or whether or not you'd want to go out and, and seek additional timeline extension. I would just need some input on that. And then the Sua organization, on Monday, November 24th, from 11:30 to 12:30, is going to be distributing 215 meals. This will be done in the Music Parking Lot. It's a first come, first served. And for the League of Volunteers, on Thursday, November 27th, from 2 o'clock, you need to call to sign up for a delivered meal and their phone number is located there. We'll be putting this information out to our community as well through Parent Square. And most importantly, I want to wish everybody in the Newark community a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. We have no school next week, from the 24th to 28th. Our district office is closed. School resumes on Monday, December 1st. So if I could just get some feedback, I have talked with the president and vice president with regard to the two applicants that came forward. They're both qualified applicants that meet the, the minimum that we had put out for information. They did comply, they met the timeline with coming back in. We did not get a response from other groups that we had put out, the application towards.
Do you feel we, hang on just a minute, Aiden and I'll get to you. Do you feel that we did not get a response because they, the timeframe or they just weren't for various other reasons more than likely?
I can't speak to what the various reasons were, but I feel like these are, these are firms that do this all the time for business. They should be ready to go, it should just be kind of a turn as to whether or not they want to be able to participate. They may have other searches going on at the same time. I can't really speak to the rationale as to why. But these are the, there aren't that many firms left anymore. Actually, many of the firms that we had names for had actually gone out of business and were no longer doing things. So there seems to be some shifts in that.
All right, thank you. Member Hill?
Thank you. So who, who were, who were the firms that we sent the RFPs to?
Oh, I don't know if I have that information in front of me. I want to say there were, I think, five different firms, four or five different firms that we went out.
I remember seeing an email of four.
One was, I know through like Atkinson-Andelson, Lloyd-Rude, they have a group called ESS, one was sent to them. Another one went out to another group that I was not familiar with, that was recommended either by CSBA or by AXA. So we had pushed out applications in that direction. And it was also on our website.
Because when we did the search the last, I mean, I mean, one, one way to do it, right, is just look at our prior searches, right? And so, because the, I, I don't recall the names offhand, but I know that there were other names in the prior searches.
So I personally called each of the firms to find out who a point contact was and make sure the information we had was, was, was actually true. So I did call that list. Many of them were no longer in business. Some did not return calls back to us for us to be able to get a correct email. But if we had something, we sent it out to them unless they confirmed that they were no longer in business doing searches. So I know like Dave Long at Associates, I personally called Dave, I spoke with Dave. He has not been doing searches for years and he wouldn't have been doing a search at the last time he did a search. So you may have sent out things.
But we, we had, in our last search, we had three firms, right? So Leadership Associates, I don't remember who the other two were, but I haven't heard their names. Okay, and then who was the other one?
I'm not sure who the other one was. I could try to see if I can.
And then, and then when we did the prior one with Superintendent Triplett, I think there were some additional ones there too.
We grabbed that list, we took a look at that list, and we reached out to them.
Okay, because I just, I mean, I have to believe that there are lots of school districts in California and there, and since the average term for a superintendent is two years, right? That there's lots of business. So I just find it hard to believe that we only have two firms that are available, right? So, I mean, I think we need at least three, three high-quality ones to do a good, proper, you know, superintendent search. So there's a way we could go back.
We would have to do an extension to the timeline and I would have to find another date for you to be able to come together and actually interview the firms.
We still have a couple weeks, right? I mean, because all, because all it takes, right, all it takes is you just send out the RFP, right? And they say, okay, and we show up.
So we can extend, we can extend the timeline, we must definitely extend it and put it till first of, of December so that we can at least turn around and put something out. We can push that back out there again and let the ones know.
Did we send a HYA?
I don't remember the, the four, I, I remember three, I can't remember who the fourth one was. It may have been HYA.
I'm only, I'm only asking because they were one of the ones that did respond in 22, or 23 when we were doing this. I just, I found that proposal. We only had two at that time also in, in 23. We had Leadership Associates.
It surprised me how many of the firms were no longer doing searches.
Well, I'm going back and I'm looking, oh, McPherson was the other one. It was later in the thread of emails.
So I suggest we read the bushes and try to get one more firm.
Sure.
But if not, on the sixth, I think we should choose a firm. What are the rest, do you think?
Oh, I, I, I agree. I think we need to move through the process. I mean, if there's, I guess we could go back to the two that we didn't hear back from and say, would you, you know, we're still interested in receiving a proposal? Is that something that we can do?
It is. I can ask Mr. Lopez to take care of that tomorrow morning and reach out to them. I will, I will have him do it.
Okay.
He's been our point of contact on that.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
He's made the initial calls.
Is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's no harm in keeping the window open a little longer and seeing if a third applicant materializes. And if they don't, then we can proceed as planned. But no harm in, you know, opening it up and seeing if anybody else is interested.
No worries. Happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. The next on the agenda is the 2425 Audit Report.
On this item here, so we've been working with our, our audit team with Crow and Associates. They have recommended to all of their clients that we all apply for an extension because we do not have the federal package yet for us to be able to complete our audit. There are some compliance and deadlines that we have to be able to submit our letter by. So I would like to be able to get the letter out in time so that we can get the 45-day extension. It means that we would be bringing the audit back to you before February 17th, which is a regular scheduled board meeting. We have been in complete conversation with them. It's not because of any fault of ours with not getting our, our pieces in. This really is waiting for the federal package so that they can complete it. And this applies to all clients that they have and probably for all audit firms, that they're all dealing with the same, same problem here. So I just, this is just an information item only, and we'll be sending out that letter tomorrow.
Great, thank you so much. Yeah.
So, so is, is there a way that, if there's certain federal fund or federal programs that are not, that weren't, that we can't collect the data on because of the shutdown, is there a way that, that we could do, just keep the regular audit on track, but then have an amendment to that once that additional information is available?
I asked that very question and was told no, that it's actually, it's part of an overall thing that gets submitted. They, they have a, they work with a lot of different clients. And so they're trying to make sure that their package stays together, that they keep everything through their testing that they do and the samples that they would be pooling based on what that is. So we haven't even pooled anything yet for the federal piece because they have not been given those guidelines as to what is they're supposed to pool.
And ACOE is aware of this?
They both certainly are aware of this. They have been in contact with them as well as with the California Department of Education. They've been monitoring this thing very closely. I've got a number of email communications plus we've met on this particular subject. And I held back as long as I possibly could to see if it might be coming through because they were still in our district as of last week. Actually, they're still there today and probably tomorrow, still pulling some additional information and gathering other samples that they're looking at to go along with it. But they're just about at the conclusion of, of our portion and it's moving along the way it should be moving for our side of it. So it has nothing to do with us. It really just has to do with the fact they don't have that particular piece. And when they do their entire report, it's the entire package that they do.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to staff reports. And I'd like to just remind the board that it, where our job is to ask clarifying questions. So we are at 11.1 from MVROP, the CT Program Presentation from Superintendent Hanson. Thank you for coming tonight.
I'm certainly hoping that that full bright is, is available. Thank you very much, Board, President Jones, Superintendent Bakar, staff.
There it is.
Oh. Thank you very much. As you probably know, we are a three-district JPA program. We serve Newark, New Haven, and Fremont. Go ahead, next, next slide. Yes, our mission statement, I think is, is something we should, you know, talk about all the time. We provide relevant career technical education by preparing students for employment and college through industry-standard tools, training, and experience. Thank you. These, we've been calling these, you know, industry sectors for a long time. The state's about to change some of the definitions, they're going to call them clusters, but there are 15 in the state. We, we are no longer a, a large farming community. We don't do forestry here. We are participating in nine or 10 of the 15 industry sectors in the state. Advanced Manufacturing, Art Media Entertainment, Building Construction Trades. Much of this is, is at the center on Stevenson and Blakow, but much of it also, about 75% of the seats that we serve are at school sites in these three districts. There's a lot of business, there's a lot of, you know, information technology, hospitality, tourism for sure, health science and medical technology, art media entertainment, art media entertainment is very popular. These are historic, very popular, they're, they're easy, they're easy classes to fill. What we've been doing over many years' time is focusing on coursework that wasn't traditionally A to G-aligned and transitioning it to be compliant so that students wouldn't have to choose between become, becoming CSU/UC eligible or taking a technical ed course that would be available at a school site or the center. So we did this because it made sense, not because nine or 10 years ago, we knew we would be talking about it maybe this much. But, you know, the tea leaves, I mean, the writing's on the wall. The system wants to prepare as many students that are viable for post-secondary experiences along with career opportunities. So the way you do that is by having them take classes that are, that are CSU/UC, you know, electives at least. We do have a handful of D-Lab Science Credit classes as well, but we have gone from 57% to the mid 80s in terms of A to G, CSU/UC recognition in about seven or eight years. So that's good, that's good. That means that stewards, students at Memorial that are taking classes at the center or at the, at the high school don't necessarily have to choose between, you know, like a CCI, a community, a, a career readiness indicator percentage and, and/or not. There's some interesting things about the College and Career Indicator. If you, if you read carefully, you'll find that communities that have, that don't really have a, you know, a threshold, they don't have a performance issue that's very large. Their CCI numbers are really high, even if they don't really have a lot of career technical education happening because the vast majority of what qualifies students for College and Career Indicator happens to be the 11th grade benchmark exams, which, you know, the CSU system has supported for many, 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 many decades. They want to know who's in the 11th grade and who's, who's a, a good applicant really. So the Career Indicator, the College and Career Indicator, the career piece of it is not a majority, it's, it's not the major, you know, chunk. It's not the major effect, but it is important. You can be a completer and be, and meet standards almost everywhere else and be college and career-ready. That's important to us. But we also don't dominate a student's 24-course hour, you know, their, their high school, you know, four-year plan. We're never really going to dominate that, that plan in terms of courses, selections, and where we may fit in. Go ahead, next. This is, this is a pie chart that we like to talk about. It's, it's historic. It has been in place for at least 20 years. 65% of our funding has come from, you know, from the old Oportnum and Days before Local Control Funding Formula because, you know, became a reality in the state. We were directly funded based on student counts and, and attendance, like schools and ADA. 20% of our population was from New Haven and 15% of our population was from Newark. We transitioned into LCFF and those, those contribution percentages stayed the same. And we have, we've moved into a grant-rich, a career technical education fortunate period of time where the state recognizes the importance of technical ed. They say they want as much as they can get. I mean, we, we hear it all the time, but there's really only so much room in a student's high school experience in, in the minutes that they're at school for CTE opportunities. So we just hope they pick what they like the most, what they're really, you know, most motivated to get after and, and take advantage of. Our funding percentages, even though the numbers have not changed from districts, the percentages are the same. So this year, this is about to the dollar. 50% of our budget at the ROP comes from state grants, from the incentive grant, which we apply for on all three districts' behalf. It's, it's a grant with a lot of money in it. We get, you know, not quite $3 million each year. Those funds kind of, they, they replace what would have been 13 or, you know, 13, 14 years of COLA at this point. There's another very popular and well-funded grant opportunity called the K-12 Component of Strong Workforce. Strong workforce dollars historically have been adult-only and they've gone to community college, the chancellor's office, and to the counties for the most part. K-12, K-12 LEAs haven't had a real, a real, you know, much involvement in strong workforce until the K-12 component came along. That grant is worth $150 million in the state annually. We've been very fortunate in our applications over the past eight years. So we, we've been able to gather pathway funds from the K-12 Component of Strong Workforce and the incentive grant, all coming from the state. None of this is federal money. It's modeled after federal funds, but it's not federal money. And that's what leads to this, to this pie chart where the, the 50% that we were receiving directly from districts and are still receiving, the numbers haven't changed in 13 years. That's great news. That's great news for all budget, for all budget officers. It's great news. So, you know, I guess we like to point this out because we're, we're grateful for the partnership and we're happy that districts have said, okay, fine, we, we believe in what you're doing. We see the, we see these dollars coming for pathways that are real. We see that there's an effect. We see program support. We see the, we see these dollars coming for pathways that are real. We see that there's an effect. We see program support, program. Program stability, program improvement. So we're roughly fifty fifty right now. At this time, Dr. Cliff Adams-Hart is our Director of Ed Resources. He's a, he does a lot of kid counting. And a lot of program management. I'm going to invite him to talk to you about the specifics of Newark Unified and. What, you know, some of the student numbers look like and what their achievements are in technical ed.
Thank you, Superintendent Hanson. Just want to share with you some numbers so you get an idea of what's happening with your students in the Mission Valley ROP programming. Currently, you have six hundred and sixty-five students enrolled in Mission Valley ROP classes, and that's a combination of that our center there on Stevenson and Blakow and at. The high school, Newark Memorial, as well as Bridgepoint. There's about five hundred and eighty-five on those sites outside the center. And then, or then we have about, excuse me, yeah, on on your center, in the center, we have about a hundred and and sixty plus. And if you do some quick math, I might just pay attention to what Principal Murphy said with his enrollment. And you divide about how many students that are taking ROP classes, you have fifty percent of your high school students. That are going through an ROP class at one time or another, and probably most of them are probably juniors and seniors. So that that's an incredible, we can't say that with 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 any other district. So that's that's an incredible, incredible thing that we have going there. Next slide, please. One of the things we pride ourselves on is our industry partners. We are excited about them. We have, just keep keep going a couple more. There we go. Our industry connections. CTE programs are built on industry. We have advisory members. We have annual meetings with these advisory members. All sixty of our programs meet with their advisors. If you're the next slide, these these advisories do a lot of things for us. They provide classroom speakers, guest speakers. It's a lot of fun to have them come in from industry to do that. They provide internship opportunities, and I'll talk about some of those internship numbers. They participate in field trips at these industry partners, these companies, these businesses. And these are big businesses to small mom and pop shops. They go across all the way. Through the different sizes. We are excited about them. They provide input on curriculum to make sure our industry. Teachers and instructors are up to speed on what's really happening out there. They talk about equipment, the latest and greatest equipment that the students need to learn to use so they can get out there and be in the job force. Next slide, please. So if we look at this. Just want to show, these are Newark numbers. So five hundred and seventy-one students from last year. Earned a certificate of completion from Mission Valley ROP. These certificates of completion are valuable in the workforce. Especially in a tri-cities area, they know Mission Valley ROP and they know the product of a student that comes out of it. So when the student has this certificate with their skill sets on the back of it. It means something to the employer and to the student. Seven hundred and forty-nine. Received industrial or industry standard certifications. These are industry-specific. That pertain to the core, the core, the course they were taking, such as. BLS for the medical assistance HIPAA certified and and across the board. So that's an incredible thing to have. Four thousand one hundred and eighty-five internship hours were completed by Newark Memorial students last year. And this was done by thirty-seven students. So those thirty-seven students put a lot of time in getting industry experience, and that's an incredible thing. Next slide. There's some mention about articulation and UCA to G. Nine hundred and twenty-three. Trying to see what, should put my glasses on. College credits, okay, were earned by Newark Memorial students last year. We have fifty-one of our classes, which is about sixty courses. We have about fifty-one of them have UC A to G credit. And with that, five hundred and forty-one students earned UC A to G credit, which adds to that CCI, that college and career indicator. It's something Mr. Hanson mentioned before that we provide. To help our districts be able to increase that. So. Those are the numbers. Any questions? Nothing?
Uh, Member Thomas.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to ask a question right now. I really enjoy attending the board meetings every month. I particularly enjoy hearing the hard work that you and the staff have done in in going after the CTEG. And strong workforce grants. That fifty percent of the money coming from the state has not only relieved the district from having to do COLA increases. We have state-of-the-art equipment that you're providing, that those grants have allowed. Students would not have the opportunity to work with industry. Equipment, upgraded equipment in welding and automotive and all of our various. Courses if it weren't for the strong work that you've done in pursuing those CTEG and and strong workforce grants. So. I just want to tell the board and the district how much we in Newark are benefiting from everything you've done at NVROP.
Thank you, Member Thomas.
Uh, Member Block.
Thank you. Want to thank you both for the presentation. Serving on the board in Newark, teaching in Fremont, I just hear nothing but wonderful things about ROP. Every student I've talked to. Adores their ROP classes. So thank you. Just had a quick question. Are all of these seats available to Newark students being filled at the moment? Like, or are there additional seats on the table? Could more students be enrolling in ROP?
That's a great question. Our allocation to the seats at the center follows the funding model that Mr. Hanson shared with you, the sixty-five, twenty, fifteen percent. So when I go through every year to make the allocation, I allocate fifteen percent of the seats to the center. The high school sites, they're going to put as many as they can, and that and that's fine. But to answer your question, so we try to keep that the fifteen percent, but traditionally. We we err on the side of Newark, which tends to be sometimes seventeen, as high as eighteen percent. So when, you know. Counselors, administration call me and say, hey, can I get a couple more students in here? We work hard to do that because we understand that it's needed, and so we we do that. So Newark never. If there's a spot, we can probably count on Newark to take it. And that happens, you know, some schools. Not named names, but Mission doesn't send a lot of welding students over, and so I can put other schools in those spots.
Proximity is important. Newark is close. As anybody but can.
Great. Thank you.
Member Agbiano.
Mr. Hanson, Superintendent Hanson, really appreciate you presenting, and I didn't catch your name. I apologize.
Cliff. Adams-Hart.
Cliff, nice to meet you. So you did mention the industry advisory program. Within that program itself, how are we narrowing the the skills gap with the AI? Are we presenting? Are we really competing with other programs in the area?
Wait, are you talking about AI specifically?
Yes, sir.
Tom, you want to answer that or you want me to?
Well, I would have to have a crystal ball. Lots of magic. What what we are. What we are doing mostly is listening to what our industry, our industry contacts are telling us. They're telling us, you know.
Could you come up to the mic? Could you come up to the mic so the folks at home can hear you?
I think I think we're hearing various things from various sectors. There's a lot of, a lot of common conversation about how many people, you know, real bodies in the workforce are going to be replaced by. You know. This not very well-defined kind of shadowy concept of AI. What what we hear is that, you know. Assisted, people-assisted cobot type. You know, environments are far more likely to be a boost in, you know. Maybe accuracy and production, but not necessarily, you know, replacing, you know, vast numbers of people. It's early. We're doing some AI instruction ourselves around ethics and, you know, like operational, you know. Common sense. Don't just, you know, plug things into Gemini, ChatGPT and, you know, Copilot. And expect to never see, you know, hallucinations made up, you know, kind of sites for your research paper, et cetera, et cetera. So what we're trying to do is get students to realize what these tools are really good for. Maybe what they're not all that reliable to, you know, for. And appropriately at their level. I think the applications are going to take some time. They're going to take some focus. There's a learning curve for all instructional, you know, kind of programs and groups of teachers for sure. I think that's, you know, a fair kind of snapshot of what we're what we're hearing from. Teachers, advisories, you know, advisory members. We just completed thirteen. Thirteen advisory meetings in the past couple, three weeks. And I'm sure, you know, Dr. Cliff and I didn't participate in all of them, but. I'm sure there are some comments out there about, you know. Common tools, things that, you know, apps that would save time in office visits, in. You know, cost estimates, you know, recordings, records, et cetera. We would be interested in, in, you know, showcasing some of those things to kids before they actually get to the workplace. But I think more of what we're going to be focusing on in the next couple of years is are the the real tools that they'll see. When they get to a work, when they get to a work environment. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, but there there's some examples, though, that we're looking at right now, maybe like in the in the medical industry. You you probably, some of you have been to the doctor's office in the last two years. A lot of times the doctors will just now speak the notes and it's being recorded. So we're finding tools for that for our students to learn. It's very popular in the automotive right now. Where, you know, most of you can probably go on a ChatGPT and diagnose your car. You know, you can do that. And so what Mr. Hanson has also mentioned is that there's an ethical use to that. And so with students, and so we are, we've spent the last since August training our teachers how to use these tools. And that will translate to the classroom. We'll take the advisory minutes, what we've just been receiving over the last few weeks. That was a question that was asked of our advisors, how is AI infecting your industry? We'll take that information, and it helps us to put more of a two-year plan together as we move forward. But in two years, AI is going to be different as it is going to be tomorrow morning when you wake up.
Thank you.
Something we are, we're realizing is that. Technological advances. Aren't necessarily, you know, AI. They're really, really nifty, smart tools that might just be local. They're not driven by large cloud models. You know, other kinds of, you know, multi, you know, multi-algorithm, you know, kinds of complex. I mean. Real IA, real IA, you know, AI costs a lot of money. And most of what we're. Mingling with on a daily basis are. Programs that regurgitate, you know, that give us quick facts, think there's not tons of thinking involved. We're learning this as we try and figure out what to put in the classrooms. We have, we're about to purchase this this headset that we're going to use in the trades. It's it's a. It's sort of like a mini iPad screen that will record. It'll tap into websites. It will, a a teacher could record little bits and build a curriculum library just by wearing the smart headset. This is just great technology. It's not, it's not really AI, but. It will, it will interface with other tools that might be, this is, this is new territory for educators. It's a. Classroom teachers everywhere are 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 being challenged, let's just say, because. We weren't really raised on on, you know, with these new tools and and these these much higher-speed complex and complicated. You know, opportunities.
Did that kind of roundabout answer your question?
Yes, thank you for sharing that, really about the tools and the the access that that you're you're having in the future. In regards to just a follow-up on that, the internship opportunities for employment. How are we exposing our children to these big corporations that are already doing the work? Are we expanding to looking into other, say, for example, Google, Tesla that we have in our backyard? How are we expanding our communication, our networks with them?
Well, what, there was a slide on there, you probably saw it, but we just had Manufacturing Day. And one of the places that we took students to was Tesla. We have a number of students getting ready, like maybe our, you know. Google has a fantastic culinary program. Everybody prides himself with that, that works at Google. Our culinary students are going to Google to look at that. Look at their culinary, you know, facilities that they have there. We have, well, how many manufacturing companies do we visit? Eight, seven?
Yeah, it's something like that, you know, over a couple week period.
And then with the industry partners are coming in as guest speakers, they, we have a college and career fair. They come in and and offer, you know, information to students.
Well, thank you. Really appreciate just the insight of just the exposure that our students are having. And just really appreciate everything you guys do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Newark Memorial Tutorial Period Presentation. It it doesn't matter, either way, on my, I don't know how, how come we've got two different things going on with the credit recovery piece? I mean, I see it one way, but I've got it printed here. The copy that I got, that the board got on our our days was with it in eleven. It's on, it's in eight. I mean, so it's kind of confusing as to where it is. I I'm happy with doing the tutorial or the credit recovery, either one. As of yesterday, when I printed this, it was in eleven, and then somehow it wound up in eight.
I'm just wondering, Superintendent, if we could do the subject first, and staff has the opportunity to go back there.
Oh. Sure.
Well, you did order on the agenda, so I.
So Board, if we move eleven-two and eleven-three, we we flip those? Or does anyone have an issue with that? And I do have a public comment on eleven-three in particular.
I would keep an order going to.
Okay. All right, so we are going to do the tutorial program first.
The committee members who spent time in and outside of the classroom to have ongoing discussions in regards to the presentation that's being presented tonight. And I also feel that the presentation will provide some clarification based on the public comments that were shared.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, we are excited to share a new tutorial model for implementation in Newark Memorial High School, beginning in the second semester of this school year. Tonight's presentation is a staff report providing the board with information. So this, we're just going to share with you the progress and where we're at. Over the past few months, we followed a strategic roadmap to enhance our tutorial program. This process involved establishing a dedicated committee to evaluate the strengths and areas for improvement in our previous tutorial model known as PAWS. We are also engaged with neighboring districts to learn from their in-school tutorial approaches. Ultimately, our goal was to collaboratively design a new tutorial model that incorporates staff and student input and feedback. And is aligned with cutting-edge pedagogy. I want to publicly thank the high school committee who contributed countless hours, wrote substitute plans, visited school sites and passionately shared their insights and ideas to design our new goals. The committee followed a process to gather information as we researched the model that would work. And from August to November, the committee met a total of six times and visited three high school campuses. After each visit, the committee debriefed key learnings and brainstormed possible approaches. Share, okay, yeah, shared are the three high school campuses we visited. These sites were selected for various reasons. These sites were selected for various reasons, including invites, recommendations, and current employees, previous districts. The three campuses also represent diverse student populations similar to Newark Memorial, as well as total enrollment. The following provide takeaways that were commonplace during these visits. And during this process, it was important to gather staff and student feedback. Staff and students received the same survey with one question, I support reintroducing an in-school tutorial period. That's, that was it. Results clearly indicate the need and desire to bring back this model. Our progress has been discussed with both staff and students. It was important for us to, it was important for us to have a purpose statement. What is Newark Memorial's Tutorial Period and what do we stand behind, how do we stand behind it? In collaboration with the committee, the shared statement clearly emphasizes the goal, how the time is to be used, and how to build positive and meaningful relationships between students and staff. Our goal is to implement, as soon as we have clarity and support for the process, tutorial may be held three days a week and attendance shall be taken each period. As of right now, the beta name is Tutorial Period. We may stay with this title, but then again, it may change. Maybe Vandalay Industries. The, thank you. I've got a few ones after that. The ad hoc committee consisting of our, of teachers who advocated for a homeroom. The advisory period is the opportunity to connect with students, something which teachers felt were extremely critical, as teachers will be assigned with a teacher they have already had. During this twenty-minute period, the main task will be for students to sign up for their tutorial periods on Wednesday and Thursdays. This twenty-minute period also provides the opportunity for daily school announcements, district needs such as safety drills and surveys, as well, as well as other requests from E S B. In further reflection, district office staff administration is realizing that Mondays may not be the best days with the four Monday holidays during the second semester, and based on current language in the CBA contract. Collaboration meetings will begin with CTA to determine next steps required for the development of an M O U. Wednesday and Thursday will be the weekly tutorial periods for forty-five minutes each day, aligned to the purpose statement. This time will be for students to review taught content, complete assignments, make up tests and quizzes, collaborate with classmates on a project, and receive support from teachers. While we are still finalizing all student expectations during tutorial periods, which will be posted in all classrooms, staff has expressed that during this time, students may not use their phones or be on any social media platforms. This expectation is also in alignment with the no-cell phone policy that will be implemented next fall due to the state legislature. Over the next four weeks, we have a lot of logistical items to, to address and communicate for a smooth and eventual smooth rollout. In collaboration with CTA, we will be designing a new M O U. Meetings with staff will be scheduled to ensure as attendance process is refined for the beginning of each tutorial period. And last week, a student focus group was held, which included our student board representative. Students provided additional insight and suggestions that are aligned to what staff has already shared. We're looking forward to the eventual implementation, where we took time to reexamine what we examined for an in-school tutorial, researched new ideas, sought feedback, and designed a new approach. As with any new model, we will learn along the way and adjust and refine to ensure a successful implementation. This concludes this presentation. I do want to say, after going to Solution Tree, there were some, there were some, I guess I would say some impressive feedback that we got in terms of share outs that they were, they were citing. A lot of the experts were saying to, in order to have a successful, you don't know what a P L C is, right? It's not just a meeting. It's, it's something, you're looking at data, you're unwrapping the standards, and you're looking at how to use data to drive students, drive instruction that's aligned to some kind of assessment. That's, that's, it's part of a culture. That's something we've been refining, refining. Solution Tree provides, I believe, the next, the next step of where we need to go, probably as a district, not only our site, but as a district. But was, what was a clear takeaway was, they're, they're advocating that you have to have some kind of an intervention model that, that's coupled with P L C time. Because if you're going to look at data and you're going to say, hey, I got to help these kids, there has to be an element of, when is that time going to be? I, I get that, that's common sense, you know? I mean, why recreate the wheel? What's interesting is they're saying, you know, there's arguments about times and such like that. When we looked at it initially, before we even went over there, we were saying, what if we look at, because there were some of the schools that was thirty minutes, thirty-five minutes, I think you guys did forty minutes, about forty minutes. The staff, they're saying, the teachers are saying, hey, look, we need more time than thirty, thirty-five minutes, because a kid needs to take a test. And I'm like, okay, if it's going to take more than thirty-five, okay, that's cool. I mean, all right, if that's, you're really going to use it for that, that's cool with me. Going to these guys, they're like, no, it needs to be forty or forty-five minutes. You need that meaningful time. And you've got teachers that are saying, after I, imagine, it's just chaos, it looks like Lord of the Flies, I've got three kids that need a test here, I've got two kids that need support here, this one needs a worksheet, these guys need some kidneys, not kidney stone, kidney table time, let's, let's bang this stuff out. After you get through the ten or fifteen minutes, then, then the work's got to go through. So I get it, you know, thirty-five minutes, you've lost all that, that, that time initially. Yeah. They did ask for the, you, you have teachers here, there are members of CTA that were asking, like, we would like an advisory period, we would like to connect with the kids, we've got kids that we would like to walk all the way through from freshman year all the way to senior year, and then they start over the process with a new group of kids. These are things that came from the teachers. So, you know, I'm sitting back, I mean, she's taking notes, Terry's taking notes, I'm just sort of, okay, let's see how this thing rolls out. What was interesting, and I would say insightful, was this staff has already been doing a lot of the things and already have the framework set up for the way they were advocating, that the experts were saying from Solution Tree, which I thought, okay, that's cool. So in a lot of ways, this forty-five minutes, this advisory, you know, whether you have it or don't, it's not a bad way to roll. So that's, it's, you've got a framework to work with. I think what we're, we're at is, is going back to that pyramid, that John Wooden Pyramid. What is your expectations? What are the, what are those Old Testament commandments that thou shalt do? What are we about? What do we expect from kids? What do we expect from ourselves? It's written in the W A S C. This is, these are the dispositions that we expect of teachers, those nine dispositions. This is how kids learn best. This is the learning, it's all in that last presentation, it's all in that W A S, it's all chapter two, I think. It's all there, you know? So that's how we are, you know, we wrote, well, it was written together, there was, there was advocacy from everybody saying, yeah, this is, okay, Mike, put it together. This is how, what we're seeing, this is how students learn best. This process, however it goes down, I know there's an M O U and all that, but whatever goes down, this is what we're going to say, this is how students learn best. This needs to be an extension of the P L Cs, which is an extension of all those explicit, not explicit, extrinsic, implicit, things that we're looking for in terms of the virtues of getting out of the kids.
Never mind, go ahead, because I got to rethink my question, I got to remember it. Member block.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Dr. Murphy, Ms. Conde, and Assistant Superintendent Allard, and for the whole committee that's been putting in work to, you know, to plan to bring back a tutorial period. You know, clearly, we've seen on that student survey, almost a hundred percent of students are advocating for the return of some sort of tutorial period.
We only asked, we only asked grades ten through twelve. I think, no, ten, nine wasn't included, they may have gotten a link, but I didn't include it because they don't know any better.
Right. I mean, they haven't seen it yet.
Ten, eleven, twelve? Okay.
But yeah, I mean, seeing that feedback, you know, I, I really appreciate seeing the effort that y'all have put in and, and bringing this back to life. So I just, my, my only request would just be that we really try to find some sort of agreement with the union to bring this back by January. You know, if we need to revise it again next summer and improve it going into next fall, that's fine, but I really think it needs to come back for the start of second semester and not wait until next school year.
I'm just going to say, I'm going to, I'm going to throw the pink elephant in the room. I'm the one that killed it initially, and I told you guys why. But that, the reasons that's being advocated, and we want it back, we want, okay, all right, let's, but we're going to, like, you broke the, you broke the car, let's fix the car, now we're going to get the car back on the road. But the very reasons that we were saying, I was saying, we're having an issue with P O S. Now I'm hearing, like, we can't start it because these are the issues. I'm glad that we're on the same page, those are the issues. All I want to say is, we need to be accountable to ourselves. You know, these kids have, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sort of like, these kids have four years in order to get a high school diploma. The parents are sending their kids to us, you guys are expecting them to be A through G, you're expecting them to have a high school diploma, and they've done all their units, and they're all, they're all on track. If we're going to, if we're going to take whatever time it is for an intervention piece, we need to be very precise with it, we need to use that time very wisely, and it's not just going to be what's convenient for me. That, that's in a nutshell, because we, in the end, that's not doing the kids any, that's doing the kids a disservice. That, that's, I, and that's the whole reason I, I killed the whole thing. Netflix isn't helping the kid, playing on the phone isn't helping the kid. Maybe reading Mad Magazine won't be very good, but I mean, if y'all like Mad Magazine, but.
I'm Brog Leon.
Mr. Murphy, I appreciate you sharing the tutorial program. I'm just curious about the committee that went, Superintendent Bakar also, and Sallard, did we have leadership team join you guys in, in the process and visiting?
Yeah, Terry went to two, right? Terry went to two, I went to three, Karen went to one. Teacher-wise, one teacher went to all three, everybody else went to either one or two.
Did, did we get the same feedback in return, like, in regards to the model itself, on how it's implemented, how it works? Did we discuss, collaborate, and come up with this particular solution here?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there, there was a conversation, that, that specific conversation went back to like, well, we could just go back there to the forty-five minutes and, you know, call it some, call it something different, but we're just doing the forty-five minutes, what's the difference here? To me, it's been about, what is the expectation? What is it moving forward? What was, what was inappropriate before, and what are we going to do moving forward? And, and people got that. I mean, people want, they all want it, obviously. There's, there's going to be expectations that I have, and I know there's going to be expectations that the union has, and there's going to be expectations that the members are going to have. And the kids have expectations. At the end of the day, the kids want an opportunity just to get, knock things out, completely get it. There's expectations that I have on a management end philosophically, and I know with the teachers, they just want to know, what is it that I got to do, and what am I accountable for? We get, you know, we got to find that happy medium and make it roll.
I can share with you that after every single visit, the committee did meet, debrief, collaborate, talk about what they liked, talked about what could be a challenge as well for their last committee. They did stay several hours after school to put the design together before it went to two feedback sessions before staff.
Yeah. Thank you. Was there any student voice included in that particular visit?
Students did not actually attend the visit, but student voice was included in regards to the model. I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Actually, but I only know from my knowledge, it was only like a AP government classroom that Ms. Woggy came into. Other than that, I'm not sure if any other classes. That's from all of I heard.
There were student focus groups last week that also gave us feedback, and ironically, the same things the students were saying were the same things that were staff were saying, but they were never together at the same time.
Thank you.
So I, I remember what I was going to say, it's just that I think it is really important that the students and the teachers know that they're all being held accountable.
Sure.
You know, hearing that, that teachers would just close their doors, and so kids had to go to a door that was open, like, no doors can be closed. There has to be that accountability, and it's on both sides. The students know they're accountable for working during that period of time, and teachers know that they are accountable for providing whatever is needed for the students. Because if we don't have that expectation of that accountability, then we're starting something back up that's going to, that's going to fizzle out. It's like, oh, it might be great for the first few, three or four weeks, but then, we, but we don't want it to fizzle out, because what we're, what the data was showing from the surveys was, the teachers and the students do want it. So let's work together and continue to make it work. And like it's been stated, there may be some tweaks that have to happen so that next year it's even better. But we continue to tweak it and, and continue to hold people, students and, and staff accountable for that time.
Yeah.
All right.
And I think we do it amongst ourselves, too. I think that's the, the real key, critical piece.
Yeah.
You know, it's, there needs to be, there needs to be a little bit of peer pressure, student to student, staff to staff, staff to admin, admin to staff. I think it's everybody, you know, there needs, there needs to be that checks and balances.
Yeah, I agree. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so like, we've all established that the accountability was a big issue from both the students and the teachers, but what is this going to look like for this upcoming semester? Like, will there be another, like, presentation for the going on, like, mid-semester? Or like, the cell phone policy? You know, like, this probably won't be such an issue for the next year, but for this next semester, because I feel like it'll be really easy for students if the teachers aren't implementing that zero cellphone policy, like, how are these teachers going to control that? So I just wanted to go back to how it was before, and then I guess just not so again.
I, I anticipate the rollout's going to be like when we have the beginning of the year expectation meeting, when I meet with the kids and sort of lay out what, what the expectation is per grade at the beginning of the year. I don't know if you remember that? And you've had it where you're senior, so three times you heard it? Yeah, all right, yeah, so you probably, yeah, okay. I expect that, I expect the other piece is going to be, you know, there are some, some people have a hard time saying no. There are some people that have a hard time calling things as it is, and I think people are just, some of us are just going to have to grow thicker skin and say, look, this is what we're going to do, and this is what we're about.
This is what we agreed to.
Yeah. Whether we like it or not, this is what we want, I mean, overwhelmingly, they're saying we want it, so, okay. I don't want to see, to me, it's a teacher moving around the classroom, making sure kids are engaged, it's, I'm walking, working with you and helping you, it's not, yeah, I got grades to do, yeah, I got, I mean, some people have fantasy football things to take care of, but that's not the time. You know, some people have, I don't know, Lotto's looking pretty good, I think Powerball's doing pretty well right now, so, you know, unless somebody won that one, but, you know, I don't have time to pick the numbers on that or Super Bowl squares, so, well, at the end of the day, this is the time to take care of the business, and it needs to be connected to the P L C process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sure thing.
Subject, credit recovery, and, let's see, Mr. Foster, you wanted to public, you had a public comment on that?
Thank you, President Jones, and members of the board. Oh, what a long, strange trip it's been. For you new members, it started about five years ago, when I came to the board to ask if they simply shut down Apex as a budgetary move. And we are now where we are, right? Presumably, the last dollop out of the bayonet's jar of credit recovery classes for twenty-nine, twenty-nine students, about a third of whom have dropped, even though we're not through the semester yet, presumably because they didn't find it worthwhile, or other reasons, I don't know. But they put in an average of three hours a week of work, which is less than a regular class. Just wanted to point that out to you. We're thankful, and actually, I see this as a turning point for this district. I'm thankful that most of the district staff who were participating in the fraud, abuse, weaponization of legal forces against me are gone. But I just want to warn you that a lot of those forces still exist at the high school. And as evidence of that, I'll point out that, I don't think he's here, he may have left a little while ago, my former colleague, Mr. Landon, just a few weeks ago, made a number of disparaging comments against me personally to the board. And I'm not going to argue with him, I'll just say he's wrong, and that's proven by the California Teacher Credential Commission ruling for me against the district, and I'll leave it at that. I think you're at a turning point, because now that you've stripped off all the lies, the fraud, you can start to see the truth. And the truth are in the data presented to you already tonight. You have a small group of students, the AP students who are doing well, and a big chunk from your I-ready scores who are dragging you down at the bottom, lowering your standards, three or more grade levels behind. That means whatever textbooks you have will be inaccessible to them. I know that because I taught students who were three grade levels below. They couldn't read anything at grade level. Your academics at the bottom are on fire, right? And we're playing around the margins, around the edges, whether it's P O S or tutorial. I mean, these students need to have immediate, intensive effort to correct the problem. And I don't see anything coming from the board. So for the parents and the students of those who are more than one grade level behind, I will simply encourage them all, read books, these things, every single night, read them. Read the ones that, that you find interest in, the ones that mean something to you. Read. If not, you are condemning your future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stop me to- Stop me to promise to the board to bring back an update around the month of November and December regarding our subject implementation. And so secondary administrative staff from Bridgepoint and Newark Memorial are here this evening to provide that information for you.
Good evening, Superintendent, Cabinet members and school board. Thank you for having us. As promised earlier this year, school year, we are providing the board with an update regarding our subject credit, subject credit recovery program. Previously, our implemented credit recovery program was called Apex. After conducting a data analysis, we discovered that some students were not completing all the coursework. And the decision was to made to discontinue offering this platform for credit recovery during the summer. However, we still needed to provide us students at Bridgepoint with credit recovery program for courses not offered and had twenty nine seniors who needed to make up one or two courses to graduate this coming May. With online credit recovery paused, we faced two key challenges. Bridgepoint students needed a way to complete required subject area courses and credits. And twenty nine Newark Memorial High School students, seniors, needed one or two courses to stay on track for graduation. In response, the board approved a pilot of the new subject credit recovery program at Bridgepoint and authorized participation for twenty nine seniors at Newark Memorial High School. With this decision, staff made commitments to the board. We shared that only the educational services team and site administrators would have the authority to manage the platform, and students could only have access to subject two days a week after school and during a Saturday Academy. We have held our promise as all of this has taken place. In addition, we ensured that the board that the highest restrictions were in place to prevent students from skipping course content. Students must complete every lesson, assignment, quiz, test, and or project. Subject coursework could only be accessed when students were completing their coursework before, after school, or at Saturday Academy under the supervision of school administrators. They could not access the content at home or on the weekends. The highest restrictions will be implemented to prevent students from skipping course content. Students will have to complete every lesson, and I repeated this again, same sentence before, so excuse that. Let's go to the next slide. The next section provides updates on implementation, beginning with Bridgepoint High School and then Newark Memorial High School. I would now like to invite Assistant Principal Brenda Bertram from Bridgepoint to present the next section.
All right, uh, thank you, members of the board, Superintendent and executive members, sorry, I'm a little under the weather. I first want to say that I really appreciate this opportunity to to be at Bridgepoint and support the Bridgepoint students. I absolutely love it there. The the connections I've made with the kids has been amazing, and it's only been four months, and I just I absolutely love it there. With that said, I love it when I go into the library to support kids in subject, and I'm like, oh, I hate subject. And I'm like, why? Like, oh, because we can't cheat, we can't scoo- we can't get through it. They actually literally have to sit there and do the coursework. So at Bridgepoint, we have forty one students currently enrolled, um, taking subject. We have fifty students, um, the ones that are enrolled, they're not eligible for for subject credit recovery. The students are completing their coursework throughout uh throughout the day advisory period. If you know Bridgepoint, we have students who, once they complete a course and they no longer have to take that course, but they have courses they need to take that we don't provide, they immediately switch to subject. So then they are with me during first through seventh period if they have a subject course. So I am in there with them in the library overseeing them and again, sitting with them, monitoring them. I also oversee the Saturday Academy at Newark Memorial. I'm there with the kids, watching them and supervising them. Like I said, um, the students are utilizing subject to complete courses. We actually did have a student uh finish the final course that she needed and is ready to graduate. That was about three weeks ago, and then today I just finalized two other courses for two other seniors. One is going to graduate uh early or ready to graduate. The other one has a few more subjects that they need to um access, and they'll be on track to graduate. So subject has allowed um the students at Bridgepoint to take those courses that aren't offered uh and to make up those courses that they were not able to um successfully complete while they were at Newark Memorial. We got a little bit of a late start at Bridgepoint, just logistically. It was we had to get Newark Memorial going, and then we had to kind of logistically figure out how to do it at Bridgepoint. I think the way that we've at least initially implemented it has been great. We are working on uh changing the schedule a little bit for the second semester to really get those kids finished and completed with subject. Right now, like I said, um, particip- or uh engagement varies just depending on um which period of the day the students have and et cetera. We actually have students who don't have a first period, and they come to school first period to do subject. And I even had a meeting today with a parent and said, let's do it, and the parent's like, yes, let's do this. So I have students who don't have first period, don't even have second period, and they come to school to do subject, to finish their courses because they are motivated to graduate. It's important for us to um include the student voices, and so I went around and I talked to the students, and it's funny, when you look at the quotes, the quotes seem negative, but they're really not. They're negative because the kids have recognized that they can't cheat their way through ap- through subject like they were Apex. The one really good, actually, um, positive thing was one of our um, our it's our senior, he perfect attendance, got a four point O last quarter. He actually said he thinks that subject is easier to navigate because in Apex, he had to wait to get moved on to the next course. With subject, he can just go right on to the next course. It's very user friendly, the inter- the interface is very friendly. And like I said, one of the students said, I don't like it because I can't cheat my way through it. And I was like, that's why it's great. So um, the Bridgepoint students, um, for the most part, like I said, they've accepted subject, they've accepted that they have to do it, they come to the library, they get started right away. I come in later, I take attendance, I sit with them, um, but every student has pretty much accepted the fact that they know they need this to graduate, and they're doing it. So that's Bridgepoint, thank you.
Great, thank you.
At Newark Memorial, twenty nine students were originally approved and enrolled in subject to complete credit deficiencies. Currently, eighteen students are actively participating. The decline is for various reasons, such as students moving out of the district, taking on additional courses in person during the semester, or they provided out of country transcripts uh that documented the classes that they needed to take. We started the implementation of subject on September seventeenth. As previously mentioned, the students stay after school two days a week supervised by an administrator. Students have also attended two Saturday academies thus far, we got a couple more coming up. Uh, the eighteen students have completed approximately seventy percent of their coursework, so they're on track. Uh, overall data demonstrates that students on average spend about three hours per week, and they are actively active about twenty hours a month, which is pretty much there. Students at Newark Memorial also shared some insight about their experience, you can see the the quotes up there. Several several quotes there, but um I I say they're very similar to how Bridgepoint kids are are saying what their thoughts are. They're they like the program, and they have to work for it, and they're jammers with it. And let's get back to Jer- Terry.
Okay, looking ahead, there are some considerations for the board. The next one. So as most high school districts offer credit recovery during the school year, we now have a system that is being implemented with not only fidelity and carefully monitored by the Educational Services Department in addition to our site administrators. In the first quarter, we had a hundred and one seniors with two hundred and fourteen Ds and Fs marks in quarter one, including a hundred and thirty two F grades. While semester grades are not something that's going to determine until, you know, whether a kid is going to fail the course for the semester until finals occur, we can offer the one or two courses that seniors may need from January, May, from January to May after school, and on a few select Saturdays to graduate this May with our classmates, um, with their classmates. So we have those seniors that did not do well that first quarter for this year, and so um what we're looking at is like for second semester, if that is a possibility. Thank you again for this opportunity. I want to thank Dr. Murphy and Ms. Bertram and also Ms. Allard for their guidance and support and just hard work in order to make this program work for our students. So thank you. Any questions?
Member Hill.
So as as a follow up to my earlier comments that I'd made to Dr. Murphy when we were talking about um some of our test scores. So I talked about the fact that we are kicking the can down the road, right? And so it's happening at at our high school, but it's it's happening all over the state and in many parts of the country. But I I want to just read a couple of snippets. I saw this uh this news story on the news like a couple of days ago, and um and I pulled up um the quick little news article that the the local university had put together to talk about it, and I and I want for everybody for this to sink in. So this is coming from UC San Diego. UC San Diego, and this literally was released a couple of weeks ago. UC San Diego's record high enrollment seems to have come at a cost, increasingly underprepared students. On November sixth, UCSD's Senate Administration Working Group on Admissions released a new report that found significant decreases in the writing and math preparation of admitted students over the last five years. And here's this, and here's the data. Since twenty twenty, the percentage of domestic students that fail to meet the University of California's entry level writing requirement has increased from twelve percent to eighteen percent. So this is over the past five years. Scores on UCSD's mathematics course placement exam have similarly declined. The percentage of students requiring remedial math has increased from point five percent in the fall of twenty twenty to eleven point eight percent in the fall of twenty twenty five. And here is the most even more frightening statistic. Nearly one in eight students in UCSD's um UCSD's twenty twenty five incoming class exhibited math skills below middle school level. A thirty fold increase over over the last five years. They are now creating courses in our in our colleges to teach kids middle school level math. This is disgraceful, right? And we cannot become complicit in it. The other thing that they say here, the report argues that the gaps in knowledge are most visible in under-resourced schools in poor areas that already were struggling before the pandemic, often LCFF schools. Does this sound familiar? These high schools were also the most negatively impacted by COVID nineteen related ed- educational disparities disparities. When they look, though, at what's going on, right? So they're basically saying, we, the high schools, are telling the colleges, we are sending you prepared students. But when the when the students actually show up, they are not prepared, okay? And so as they went in and they diagnosed it, they said, following the UC's elimination of standardized test scores in twenty twenty, admissions officers have been more reliant on inflated high school transcripts to assess applicants' college preparedness. Remote classes and asynchronous learning, hallmarks of pandemic era pedagogy, also contributed to grade confla- uh inflation. And here's the interesting thing. Of the one eighth of students exhibiting middle school math level skills, many earned high grades in math classes intended to test standards beyond the minimum UCLP require- uh prerequisites, right? So we are fooling ourselves, okay? And I will tell you as a teacher that that if you go to any teacher credential program worth its salt and you talk to people who are experts in how people learn and how kids learn, it is through a didactic model. It is through an interaction between the teachers and the students. It is not planning somebody in front of a screen and having them read a couple of things and then take a test. If we employ that model, um, we are not going to need these kids for future jobs. AI can do it better, quite frankly. It can do it better and it can do it faster. So this model does not work, and we have to stop fooling ourselves. So when it comes to, you know, number one, I wasn't a supporter of of even having this this um, this pilot at the at the high school. But we are but we we gave kids a chance since they were caught in the middle. And what we've already seen is that a third of them have already dropped out, and it isn't even the 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 end of the semester. To 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 then take this idea and say, well, you know what, we keep need to be putting Band-Aid over Band-Aid, and so we're going to go offer this next semester and future semesters. Well, you know what, a lot of these programs, just like Apex, um, are are going to say, yep, these kids are prepared, let's push them on. But when the rubber meets the road, they're not prepared. And the problem is, is that there's that that these programs are saying that they're prepared. But of course, they're saying they're prepared, right? The people who are selling the software want us to buy the software. But we need some independent verification, right? And so just as these programs have indicated, the way that they used to do an independent ver- verification was standardized tests. But you but since UC has eliminated, there mean many schools are bringing them back right now. You had to rely on either, you know, transcripts of, you know, maybe classes where there was grade inflation going on, or as they're saying, online learning. So let's just, let's acknowledge that we got to get back to basics, right? And 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 I and I and and I'm sorry, you know, and I I I know that that staff put effort into this. But but having kids give us an opinion about the quality of these online um testing platforms, I really don't think is valid, right? So we need to be talking to the people that are the experts, namely the teachers, right? And so because the kids are still learning what is expected of them. They have no other context. That's why we have adults, and that's why we have teachers. So we have to have experts commenting on this, and quite frankly, you know, what I talked to one community member about this, and they suggested a great way if we want to keep these online um programs is we have them go through them, but then we have them take an exit exam with a real teacher in a real classroom here in our schools. And it's and it is the it is the curriculum that is expected from that teacher to actually promote that person. So um so again, I I think it's a really flawed model, and I think that we ought to we ought to think seriously about moving forward. Thank you.
Uh, Board Board Member Hill, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to clarify that a third of our students did not leave the program. If you look at the slide deck, only two students chose of the twenty nine chose not to attend. The others were corrected either by adding a seventh period in their day, their school day, or we received transcripts from their country where they um moved from. So it it wasn't a third.
And again, I so and that's fine, I can't speak to that. But what but what I can speak to is what UCSD has said, that literally the our product that we are sending to them is substandard. We're claiming it is it is a gold standard, but when it comes to actually doing the work, they can't even do middle level, middle school math. And quite frankly, our our test scores are showing us this, right? And so so we got it, we we got to actually acknowledge that there's a problem, and and the and the definition should have been Sandy is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result, right? So so we we got to get back to the basics, and we got to have kids really know something and not fool ourselves that some fancy interface is somehow going to pour knowledge into their brains, and all of a sudden, they're going to be completely functional.
I would like to extend an invitation to the board to come see the program in action, Mondays and Tuesdays after school from three forty five to five forty five. So you can see the interface in person and see what the students are going through.
What what I I what I would like to see, though, is I would like to have, again, teachers coming up and verifying independently that what these kids have gone through, they've actually learned something. Because I've gone through the teacher credential program, I have literally had academics tell me that this is a flawed model. So people that study this for a living, right, they've said it's a flawed model. But I can tell you in my own classroom, right, that that when I give kids stuff just to memorize and go, and they can perform rote analysis and and go and guess, you know, answers to tests. But but when I, like, for example, I'm teaching my kids right now about economics, and I've given them some basic understanding of how interest rates work and why the Fed might increase or decrease interest rates, and I have little worksheets that they do, and then they fill out the worksheets. But then when I But then, when I come afterwards and I have them read a Wall Street Journal article about what's going on in the economy, I find out that half of them don't really understand how it works. So, they might have guessed right on the test, but the way that we verify and actually reinforce the knowledge is by having a discussion, right? But these programs don't do that. There's no discussion, right? So, I think it's a flawed model.
Thank you all for the presentation. Really appreciate hearing the update on how subject is going. Would you mind sharing a little bit about what the assessments look like the students are taking? So, when they're passing these classes, like, what kind of assessment? Are they multiple choice? Are they like essay questions that are graded by, like, a certificated grader? Like, how does it actually work when they pass these courses?
Combination. When they're doing either a short or long. Short, short or long.
Short answer.
Short answer, yeah. Short answer, yeah. It is, it's submitted, like a final exam, that is submitted to somebody on the other side of subject who's credentialed, and they're reviewing it and they're grading it accordingly.
All of their teachers are credentialed.
And if students need help while they're working on the classes, they go to whoever's monitoring, like you, for example, or would be?
No, they have, they have online direct support if a student needs help. And also, too, like, students who are taking art classes, they actually have to produce art, and then they have to upload it to the program as well. So, it's not, so, like, when they're doing an art, like I said, art class, anything where they have to, they have to actually do it, and then they have to upload it to the platform. But, yeah, any questions on course material, there's help, there's like a help thing within the platform.
So, they're having like a dialogue with a live person on the other line?
I don't know if it's a live person, if it's like an AI chat. I haven't, I actually haven't had any students come up to me to say, I don't understand this. So, yeah.
I can actually speak to that a little bit. What sort of, I will say, the cool feature about this is if a student has an IP or has 504, and they need some accommodations and stuff, many of those, all those items are in there. The highlighting, the text, the blowing it up, the rereading it, the AI piece, the help me, the chat box, whatever. It will, I mean, it will not give them the answer, but it'll water down the point until they, the kid is able to get, realize, hey, I'm not going to get the answer from this. But if you really, truly need help, it will help them to find in the discovery of the answer.
It will reword the questions. If I were, if it was asking, you know, what is mitosis? Can you clarify that? And so, the system actually will put it in a different wording.
Okay. And then, when they're taking their assessments, is there like a lockdown browser or something so they can't like go to other tabs? There's some sort of like feature that just makes them only be on that one tab?
So, we set up the program with the actual company prior to starting and launching the program in terms of security features. So, they can't access any other, you know, social media or website. They can't move forward. We put it at, what, 85%? 85% passing. Any items that they, or any curriculum that they complete, they have to pass with 85%.
Great. I would definitely be interested in taking up your offer and seeing how it all works if I'm still welcome to.
In the Star Lab, please come. Yes? Monday and Tuesday.
Unless there's a holiday, but.
Yeah, unless it's a holiday, then it moves to Wednesday.
Monday night footballs are a holiday.
3:45 to 5:45, and then we have a Saturday, oh, we just had a Saturday.
The next Saturday is December 15th.
Yeah, and that was for.
13th, sorry.
That's for four hours from 8 to 12. Yeah, so.
First of all, Ms. Bertram, really appreciate it. Dr. Murphy and Ms. Conde, and looking into and just bringing back data, information from the students. I'm just wondering, from the two students that attended the Saturday Academy, how are you motivating these students? Is it two students that attended, or?
No, I'm sorry. So, the Saturday, so I support Memorial, Newark Memorial with the, with subject on Saturdays, and there's, there was like, this past Saturday, there was like, I think, 10 students there. No, at Bridgepoint, the students are doing subject throughout the day, depending on the periods. And so, the two students that I, I went into subject today and saw that they had completed their courses, so then I had to go through, verify it, and then hit the work completed thing. If you go too soon, so if a student comes to me, like a student on Saturday came to me and said, I'm done, when I went, I clicked the button, and it's like, please wait, the course is still being graded. So, there's still somebody on the, on the other end that's grading the work. So, once a student completes, it's not, they're done. Someone's got to grade the work. Then it goes to me that says, student is completed, then I have to mark a button, click a button that says, student complete. So, when I went in today, I saw that two of my students had finished the coursework that they were assigned. One of them, it was the last one he needed to do, and he's done with subject, and the other one, now I have to enroll her in another, enroll her in another course.
So, you're verifying that information?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that piece there.
Member Thomas.
Yeah. I was never a fan of Apex. I think Apex did a lot of disservice, and I'm really a skeptic. I'm willing to come and look and see what's happening, but I think about biology and the way you learn by dissecting animals and critters. I think about chemistry and working with chemicals and seeing the chemical reaction. I think about algebra and showing step-by-step how you struggle through a, I remember my ninth grade, the train leaves Station A at such and such a time and such and such a speed, and Train B goes toward it, same thing, and when and where are they going to meet? I don't see how these courses can prepare a student for Algebra I, or Biology, or Chemistry, or any of the other real core courses where we want our kids to leave with those skills. So, I'm willing to come and watch and be open-minded, but I'm a real skeptic.
I think the ironic thing is, Member Thomas, is that the majority of our junior colleges all offer online classes in Biology and Chemistry, such as my son right now.
Well, I think that's a disservice to students.
Ms. Conde, can you also remind me, because I asked you to research, how many high school districts offer credit recovery during the school year?
Off the top of my head, Castro Valley, Fremont, Cupertino, Pleasanton, San Leandro, Hayward, it's really all of them.
I wanted to say that there was around 20.
Yeah. It's like 20, I think it was, the number that I had was 19 out of the 22. Yeah, I think it was 19 out of 22.
No more than that, because she's 19 out of 22.
Yeah.
We looked, we looked, also in the South Bay.
I researched the data, so I just didn't include it in the slide deck, yeah.
Do they use subject, or do they use Apex, or what?
Different ones. So, it ranges from, and I had that on the.
Edgenuity.
Edgenuity. There was a new one that I didn't recognize. Apex, a lot of them use Apex, Edgenuity. There was two others that are new to me, but, yeah. But San Mateo, Santa Clara, Morgan Hill, Brentwood.
I think I also, I mean, I watched both of my own kids go through, you know, through COVID and having to take all pre-nursing, you know, tons of science classes. And they did it and, you know, did very well. The reality is that things have changed so much when it comes to kind of, I'm like, don't you need to go to class? They're like, no, it's all online. That reality has shifted so much now and brought on by the pandemic. But it is the reality that even a number of the college courses, their kids are not being required to go to campus. They're doing it online. They're, you know, it's secure rooms, but it's, but they're on, but they're online, and it's more way higher number of online courses than, you know, I thought was possible. But they've figured out how to do it, and it's how, you can literally get your entire four-year degree online.
Well, I concur with you, President Jones. My son went to UC Davis with a degree in applied mathematics, and a year and a half of his upper-level courses were online.
Yeah.
So, and he did well, so.
Yeah. All right. Let's see. Member Hill, really quick, and then I need, because we need to move on. And I know, I'm just trying to have him go quickly first.
Just quickly. Everybody's kicking the can down the road. And the sad thing now is, so, just as earlier levels have not been preparing kids for high school, and high schools are now socially promoting people with oftentimes not having the skills, and we've just seen it, I've just told you about it, but now it's infecting our higher education, right? So, I'm not surprised to hear all these stories. There was an article in the Wall Street Journal just recently entitled, "How Do You Spell Harvard? It's With All As." And they found that grade inflation is happening at one of our top universities in the country, and that the average, grade point average from 1980, which was 3.2, is now 3.9, okay? But we are fooling ourselves. We are fooling ourselves. But you know who's not fooling themselves? Communist China, okay? We are going to fail as a society if we don't get our act together. Thank you.
All right. Superintendent.
Thank you. I could just wrap a few, add a few thoughts to think about. As we look and move forward, we want to make sure that we brought you back data. We promise that's what we were going to do. We want to be able to provide you with that. I do believe that subject is better than Apex. With that said, I don't think any of them are the best product that was out there for our kids. There's nothing better than first instruction and actually learning and practicing and doing repetition.
Agreed.
That is truly the best method. And so, I'm not going to even try to sugarcoat that. I believe that wholeheartedly. I'm not surprised by the data that we're seeing, that it seems to be clouded by by a system that has allowed it to be clouded and not take into account that we aren't holding people to a higher rigor and a higher standard. The bottom line is, and I don't agree with Member Hill, I mean, I do agree with Member Hill, that we absolutely need to be competitive internationally, and we're not. As a country, we are failing, and our kids are the ones who are going to really hurt from it. They're going to hurt because they're not going to have access to the courses that they need to have access to, to be able to think in a different kind of dimension than what we've been used to even thinking about. The stuff that you see on paper anymore doesn't even matter, because the stuff that's happening up in some other virtual base is exactly what our kids need to be working towards. But if they don't have the repetition and the ability to be able to have that critical thinking skill that goes along with it, and be held accountable, the bottom line, they have to be held accountable. It's great to have some of the social opportunities that they have on their campuses, but the bottom line is, we are an educational institution, and we somewhat have taken some steps back by adding so many other kinds of things, that sometimes the concentration is more on the things that they like to do and the things that they can interact with versus the things that are really going to get them to where they need to be in their future and to make sure that they have a guarantee in their future to be productive in society. I am concerned. I'm concerned about where this is taking our kids. I've been concerned for a long time, from the time that we first started looking at online classes, which was really about 15 years ago, and introducing those into our system. It replaced the dangling chads that we had out there that we used to stick in a machine, and kids hit us there kind of almost like a punch to be able to give out the answers of what they have, as a multiple choice, A through E. We all know, the answer's not all we see. So, with that said, I think there's still work to be done. I think we still need to focus on first instruction. With that, we need to be looking at what we're doing with Ms. Allard and what we're doing with our teams of leaders and our leadership teams at the schools to be able to increase for our teachers to have access to, A, looking at their data, and, two, having conversations about having the best curriculum that will help them lead those discussions in their classroom. So, they've got to have the tools, and we've got to make sure they have the tools. And having tools that are 20 years old is not, that's not good quality, and it's not what we should be providing for our students. And so, I'm excited that we're going to be looking at new curriculum tools, access to curriculum. That's what we need to do. That's what we need to be able to spend our money, and that's what needs to be the driving force. My two cents.
So, I just want to say thank you, and to kind of sum it up with, you know, we may need this now, and the hope is that with bringing back an intervention program, increasing our curriculum and the rigor, that we can work our way out of needing to be able to provide this for our students, that we really, you know, put that work in the classes and really help the students in class at the time that they're taking it, so that they can do well, and we're not put in the position of having kids or so many kids needing credit recovery. So, that would be the goal. How far can we bring those numbers of kids down that are using credit recovery as a way to graduate?
And, boy, you may want to go back and take a look at your policy, because you might need to be looking at more five-year super seniors. If you're going to hold a rigorous account for your students, you may have to change your policy, and you might have to ask for some educational waivers to ensure that you have funding for that fifth-year students at the high school level. They can't do all the catch-up if we're not doing it starting at the primary grades and bringing it forward.
Absolutely.
Right? It doesn't just happen at the high school.
No, no, absolutely. It's got to start from the bottom up.
That's correct. And we know that kids are struggling already in some of their courses at the foundational levels of our primary grades.
Yeah, yeah. It's got to be everybody held accountable from TK on. So, thank you again. Appreciate you staying late.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to move to use updates.
Before that, I think we need to extend the meeting.
No, I got it under control. Don't worry. I got it. Y'all panicked. All right, we can do it now. I was going to do it after this, but we can do it beforehand. I don't want to, you know.
Go ahead and do it when they get themselves set up. They're getting set up while you go off and extend.
All right. I'd like to have a motion to extend the meeting to 10:45, please.
I would please take it to 11:00.
All right, 11:00.
I make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:00.
Motion, Aguano, a second from.
I will second.
Block.
Although I'm crying on the inside.
All right, and a vote, please, on that. Hang on, let me just get the buttons all pushed. It's so slow to respond. All right, can I have y'all vote, please?
Want to plug in?
Aiden?
You do not have to stay.
No, no, I was saying, my three presentations are done. Thank you. All right, everybody says yay to going to 11:00. Thank you. The immortal words of joy, right? Yay.
All right, Travis is pulling this up. There has been a lot of work put into this particular topic over the last six to eight months, is we've done a deep study in looking at outside areas. I want to thank staff for all their work that they've done on bringing this together. It's been one of the heavy lifts that we know that we need to bring forward in order to be competitive and to make sure that if we are going to use our facilities, that we've got ways that we can use our facilities and make sure that we can support it. There we go.
Perfect. All right, good evening, everybody. Tonight, I'll be presenting an update on facilities use for Newark Unified School District. Next slide. All right. As we begin, I want to ground our discussion, ground our discussion in the Civic Center Act. The state law requires districts to make school facilities and grounds available for community use when those spaces are not being used for school purposes. It also allows districts to charge fees to recover direct costs associated with the use. Understanding these requirements is essential, because they guide how we structure our rental program, our pricing, and our responsibility to both the district and the community. Next slide. The Civic Center Act ensures that our sites can be used for civic, recreational, and educational activities, while also allowing the district to ensure fair access, consistent procedures, and financial sustainability. It is a foundation for nearly all decisions related to facility use. Next slide. To ensure transparency, consistency, NUSD uses Facilitron as our online facility rental platform. The system allows community users to see real-time availability, request spaces, upload insurance documents, and complete payments. It also provides our staff with monitored efficiency workflow, allowing principals, custodians, and our MOT staff to coordinate approvals, schedules, and billing with accuracy and speed. Next slide. Okay. NUSD currently offers nine welcoming spaces across the district. Um, NUSD currently offers nine welcoming spaces across the district, uh, gyms, multipurpose rooms, cafeterias, fields, and a theater that are all available to the public. These sites support a wide range of community activities, including youth sports, enrichment programs, cultural events, and nonprofit gatherings. The demand for our spaces continue to grow, and the community relies on these facilities as important neighborhood hubs. Next slide. All right, so slide six. Each year we review our fee struc- structure to ensure alignment with the Civic Center Act, market conditions, and our actual cost of operations. This review includes custodial, labor, utilities, wear and tear, and administrative processes. Based on our analysis, we are recommending a responsible and modest adjustment to our rental rates. Another important factor is the cost of living adjustment, or also known as COLA. As operational costs rise, including labor, supplies, utilities, and maintenance needs, our facility use fees must reflect those increases so that the district is not subsidizing community rentals with general fund dollars. By aligning our fees to, with, by aligning our fees with COLA trends, we ensure long-term sustainability without placing an undue burden on users. Next slide. So as you can see, what we're proposing is a ten percent increase. Our proposed adjustment focuses on sustainability. The goal is not to generate profit, but to maintain compliance with the state law while protecting district resources. Sustainable pricing helps us cover the true cost of opening, operating, and restoring our facilities before and after community use. Next slide. Benefit, fit to the proposed increase, the benefits of, I'm sorry. The benefit of this propose- proposal include ensure the district's, uh, district recovers its direct costs maintaining our facilities to keep them in good condition for both students and community users, providing, uh, predictable transparency pricing, supporting a rental program that continues to grow without negatively impacting the general fund and keeping NUSD competitive with surrounding districts. Next slide. So next couple of slides kind of shows a few different graphs. And I'll kind of just explain them a little bit. So these are our neighboring districts. Bottom, bottom two reflects our current pricing and then our proposed pricing. Um, you can see the gray is for our fields, orange is for our multipurpose rooms, and blue is for our gyms. Uh, we'll jump to the next slide. Um, this is a generic comparison for our gyms. As you can see, we took the rate, hourly rate comparison Fremont Unified School District, Santa Clara Unified School District, New Haven, City of Newark, um, and then the comparison of our NUSD current rates to our NUSD proposed rates. Next slide. Exact same thing for our multipurpose rooms. Next slide. And this is for fields. Next slide. Uh, we've also updated our rental guide to provide a clear information, to provide clear information for community groups. The guide outlines the rental process, required documents, fee structures, insurance expectations and setup and cleanup responsibilities. This ensures fairness, transparency, and smooth communication with all users. Next slide. Any questions?
Um, Member Aguiano.
Mr. Dufresne, I really appreciate you sharing the, uh, the draft. In regards to the hourly rate, I did notice the comparison. Do we have any type of, say, for example, we have Newark residents that they get a certain percent? Or partner organizations that they get a, a ten percent versus other outside organizations from, uh, other than Newark?
Yeah, so we have a four, uh, kind of group rate. Um, each group kind of specifies its, um, what, who would fall in those groups. Um, I have it pulled up here. Um, just group four is for, um, private profit organizations. Group three would be nonprofit. Um, group two would be, uh, NUSD affiliated groups. So there is a different kind of price, price range for each one.
So, so like, uh, for example, the group three direct cost, that particular seventy percent Newark residents?
Uh, which one are you looking?
Um, page, page three, yes.
On your draft.
User group categories?
I'm sorry, okay, yes. Page three, I have that here, sorry. And what was the question?
The question is, uh, seventy percent Newark residents, what, what exactly? That seventy percent, what does it cover? Does it cover the insurance as well as that whole pa- package? Or is it seventy percent for this particular direct cost?
No, actually, the seventy percent relates to the people that would be in that organization. So if there's seventy percent members of actually Newark, so let's say it's a travel team, for example. And the travel team's made of a seventy percent participants. I think that's what we're looking at there in that particular scenario. Does that help you with that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And then, um, they would also have a caveat that they would have to charge their, their, uh, participants, um, no more than six, less than sixty dollars per month. So like, if it is a youth organization that's coming in, we wanna be able to help and support them. So we're making allowances for that particular.
Thank you.
Member Thomas?
Yeah, thank you very much for do- putting this together. I think it's been overdue, and I really appreciate it. One of the things I wanted to ask was about the decision to make a ten percent increase across the board. To me, that doesn't seem correct. It, it seems to me, for example, that we're kind of in competition with the City of Newark, right? They're charging seventy dollars for their fields, and we're charging forty-four. So why aren't we meeting their numbers? Why, why, what's rationale for just ten percent without looking at the type of facility?
Uh, a couple of things that kind of went into factor is, one, we haven't raised our rates since, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one. Um, so that's kind of what we drew our baseline at. As you can see in the graphs, especially the first one on, uh, a number... Could we pull up slide eleven?
Which graph?
Uh, slide eleven.
While they're pulling that slide, just to share with you, back in, um, last time it was done, there was not a great study that was actually done and performed at that time with an analysis. Um, it really could have been a much better study. So you were already off going back to twenty twenty twenty-one in your dollar amounts.
Uh, so the different things that kind of factored into this, you can see kind of the, the colors are all over the place. And one thing I wanted to take note of, um, I know you mentioned fields, but I'm gonna kind of jump to gyms. So NUSD proposed on the very bottom right there, something that we took into consideration is, what gets used a lot is at our high school, the Event Center. The Event Center is not just a regular gym. So it's not always just a, a, you know, cookie cutter comparison, a gym to a gym or a field to a field. Um, so we did take that into the, into a consideration as well. I just wanted to make note of that.
Well, I'm glad to see that. Value pricing, if you will. But have you given any thought to increasing the, um, field rate? To match the cities, at least match the cities? That's kind of who's right next door.
So that's a little bit hard, so you're saying, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So you're saying, uh, raising the field prices?
To match the cities.
So e- exact kind of scenario there is a lot of the city fields that they're using, that they're renting aren't much of a comparison to ours. A lot of their fields are artificial turf. A lot of the fields that we use are not our, that we're using, that we're renting are not artificial turf.
Yeah, well, they're getting McGregor Fields for a dollar a year. So, um...
That's a different story.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
I'll stand by my recommendation.
Uh, Member Hill?
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Dufresne, and, um, and also the presentation looks very professional. So thank you, and very thorough. Um, I, I did have a question, though, and, and the, and the question is that, um, it was kind of building on, Member Aguiano, and, but it's also building on prior discussions that I had with Superintendent Vicar. So one of the things that I discussed with Superintendent Vicar a lot last year is that we were finding out that we had many of our facilities that were being used after hours. And, and so, number one, we were char- we weren't charging anything or maybe a nominal fee, like a dollar or something like that, um, which in some ways is fine because it's a sunk cost, right? Which means that, that, that you have a cost in that facility, and whether it sits idle or not, you have that cost. But what you wanna be worried about is you wanna be worried about variable costs, right? And so those are costs that, um, you have some control over. And so in, in our situation, where it really comes in, is any type of janitorial or groundskeeping or that kind of thing. And what we were finding out was that there were all sorts of groups having these events, and they weren't paying anything, right? Um, and, and I, and I see that, you know, you, you've kind of got this ca- these categories here of different groups. But, um, and obviously, if ed code is prescribing that we have to follow certain things, well, that's fine. But as I quickly pulled up that ed code three eight one three four, I'm not sure that youth sport lea- sport leagues fall into that category. Um, the only thing that I saw, and we might wanna just double check on this, is they specifically call it... Hold on, what is it? So they call out Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, a parent teacher association, a school, uh, a school community advisory council. Okay. Say it again?
Go ahead, I'm listening.
Oh, and I actually, it does, it does say, um, youth sports league. Okay, so, okay, ma- maybe I stand corrected here. But, um, but one thing that I, I want us to be very careful about, and is that this is just like special ed, right? Where we be, it's essentially an unfunded mandate, right? So it's one thing to let people who are not in our school district use our properties. It's another thing to take money out of our pockets to go pay for non-school activity. Because what, the thing that I think that we need to look at is we are picking the pockets of our kids.
That's correct.
Right? And so any group that's not directly connected to our district, that money is now not flowing to our kids. It is flowing to that group in the form of janitorial fees or that kind of thing. And so I think that we want to, I think that we want to be very careful about this. And, and again, I want us to look at this as a business, and I know that that sounds, you know, that to some people that sounds bad. But last time I checked, right, we, we live in a capitalist society, and capitalism in the United States has produced the most prosperous, um, country in the world. So there's something to it. Um, and what I would say is, is that if there's certain areas where we need to subsidize, that means there are other areas where we overcharge to compensate for the subsidy. And so I think that we ought to look carefully at that to make sure that it's neutral, right? So at the end of the day, that if we're letting people due to the civic, the civic act have access to our facilities, um, uh, in off-hours, that we are not picking the pockets of our kids, right? That it is cost neutral. So that's my only recommendation. Thank you.
And staff and I have had that conversations back, and one of my concerns is, as you know, it's already hard to find staff. Um, so if we are now using overtime and then staff calls out the next day because they're tired, and that happens, we need to make sure that we're really monitoring that because our first and, and priority service is to our current students and our current staff. It's not to be able to be renting out our facilities for, you know, I would say for weddings and for festivals and things that are going on. In some cases, we would actually rent out our facilities and then find out that there weren't enough restroom facilities, and we were having to bring in restroom facilities, and they weren't even being charged for it. Um, those are concerns that we have. And in some cases, we had nobody actually monitoring the festive, the festive activities that were happening. So it's important that we make sure that, one, we have enough staffing to be able to help and support when there is a need to have things monitored, to make sure that, um, our investments in our educational program stays whole and is, is supported. And then it also has a way of being able to be recycled, to be re-modernized, right? And that we're not just tearing it down, and then later on, our coffers are having to pay for it. But instead, there's actually some sort of formula, you're actually using and saving and putting money aside so that when you have to replace a piece of equipment that's got worn, it's coming out of that coffer versus that of our educational fund. So I completely agree with you. I think we are trying to make that effort here in what we're looking at. We're looking at surrounding ar- areas, also looking at our COLA comparisons. Um, our COLAs in the last five years were, were nearly twenty percent, um, or more. And so for us to make the modest, um, you know, adjustment of saying ten percent, and then to bring in a formula for the future, to be able to look at future COLAs to help continue to, to raise that, um, that fee to the community, we think that's a good way to go about doing this.
I, my comment as I look at the, at slide eleven is, um, that we just put in a new field at the high school. And just like our acti- our event center is more, should, is that something that we could look at pricing differently? Like not on the same scale as the fields at, at BGP?
So there's some facilities we are not putting on our thing, and the field is one of them because of the, the maintenance that goes with it. It would have to be a sponsored event either by the district or by the school site that's actually hosting the event for them to be able to go off and use that particular field. We recognize that it's high maintenance, um, and we wanna make sure that it stays that way.
Yeah, and it's kind of a, a generic cost, uh, kind of split between all the different rentals. Um, so currently, not all of our, all of our active fields that we're renting are all the same cost. There are different costs in there currently depen- based on, um, you know, the, the shape of the, of them, the, the size of them, that goes for fields. Most of our gyms are the same, but then you gotta factor in the event center at the high school. There are kind of looking at the different costs for each.
And I, I didn't look at the pamphlet real clearly, or, you know, in a lot of detail, but just a question, like, if there is a rental and there, there's more than a hundred people, are, do we have a parameter where they have to bring in their, it's in there where they have to bring in their own toilet? Or, you know, how, how does that work so that we're not ha- being held responsible for providing five toilets for them? That seems to me that would be, should be built in.
And we do ourselves review each, um... Reservation, each reservation that comes in and kind of take that into consideration as well.
Good, good, good. I'm glad.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for, um, putting it together. Uh, Member Thomas, oh, I'm sorry, Member Aguiano first, and then Member Thomas.
Quick question in regards to the restrictions. I noticed that you had, um, dogs except certifi- uh, certificated service animals. How are we controlling the usage of our neighbors, just having them let the dogs go run and finding poop all over when little ones are playing baseball, soccer? Are we restricting?
That has been an issue that we've come across, uh, having the field, most of our campuses as a closed campus and having the gates locked, uh, has been very beneficial. Having our custodians, uh, you know, kind of keep an eye on that as well, um, and chasing people off if we see gr- large groups of dogs on, on the field. Um, we've been trying to monitor that the best that we could, the best that we can.
I mean, is this something, I, I know we have signs, signage all around the school.
And we've been enforcing them.
Drones.
Drones.
Enforcing in what way, if you don't mind me asking?
Like, like I said, is it staff on site, um, you know, kicking them off the school grounds? And just in general, um, and then the fencing itself. There's not too much that we can do as far as weekends, if, if they are on the field. Um, you know, the custodians have come in on Monday morning and they do a, a full sweep of the campus to kind of pick up anything that we do find. And that's kind of what we've been doing.
Yeah, 'cause the fields are pretty big, and they're grassy, and you can't really see the poop until a kid just falls on it.
Yeah.
It's just, uh, the goose poop, I think, is probably worse than the dog's.
I, I must say, I think we've been, you know, in, in pretty good shape with that issue, in my opinion. Um, other districts I've been at don't have close campuses, they don't have fencing, and that was a, a bigger issue that we had at, you know, previous districts I've been in. But like, so we've been kind of monitoring the best that we can with the staff that we have.
Yeah, good examples are middle school. It's really...
Yeah.
All right, Member Thomas?
Um, I came down tonight and noticed that the lights are on at Sam Scott Field where the cell towers are. Are we paying for that electricity?
No, that's an... No, that's an additional charge for the rental, the renters that are using the field currently.
So they are paying for the electricity?
They are.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Really quickly thank you to Dematar and Jody. They've been a big help in contributing to this entire presentation and working on the numbers.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are up to the fee schedule update for facilities.
So before you this evening is the fee schedule that you just saw the presentation on. We are asking for your considerations so that we can move forward and get everything prepared so that we can initiate the new fees for January.
All right. Any questions? Any other questions? Okay, may I have a motion, please? I'll make a motion to approve the fee schedule. Could I have a second, please?
Pretty please? Travis and Dee are going to make motions in seconds.
Pretty, pretty please?
I'll second.
Thank you so much. All right. Let's vote. If I can. Touchpad will work for me? Member Thomas? There we go. All right. There we go. We have five eyes.
And I want to explain that I'm abstaining because I want to see the fields' rentals meet the city's rental.
Okay. All right. AB 1200 disclosures for NTA collective bargaining agreement.
Yep. I just, yep, I want to thank our speakers. Thanks for staying so late here this evening. Thank you for staying. I know you have an early morning tomorrow, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Talk to you soon. All right. Before you is the AB 1200. This is our disclosure that we send to the county office to ensure that we can meet our multiple-year calculations. I can share with you, we've got work to do in our budget to make sure that we can meet all these obligations going out for all three years. As we look at our first interim and move into our second interim, we will be making some changes and also making recommendations to you within our budget plans for reductions and changes that we can do to ensure that we'll be able to meet those three years of obligations. In there, they do tie in Fund 17. That goes in the second year of our multiple-year projection. That was, we were toying with whether it might be the second or the third year, the county has asked us to move into the second year, but if we make enough budget reductions, that will get pushed out even further. It's up to us to do the hard work and make sure that we trim back our budget to be able to meet the obligations.
Okay.
With that, we would ask for your support.
Any questions? All right. Ask for a motion, please? Okay, Member Hill?
Sorry, I did, yeah, I did have a question. So, so this is for NTA. Do we, do we have any Me Too issues that are going to be connected to this that we need to factor in?
So that has been raised to our attention. There is some language that does protect us as it relates to the employees that are being issued. The salary increase and the compensation increase related to this TA. There may be some when we get down to the, the, the details of the increase, but I don't think it's going to be a substantial amount considering the increase for the 1.75 retro back to January 1st is only for NTA members who are employed as of October 22nd of this year. So there will be some who left the district that would not be compensated.
Okay. Because I think, I think the one thing that's important, right, is because we've, we've already, you know, had some discussions about these, these numbers, but, but want to make sure that, that we're, that we understand the forecast and everything like that. And so if, and, and my understanding of Me Too is that it's, it's not required, right? It's negotiable.
So that's right.
Right? Okay, but so, but so I think because we haven't, since we haven't really formally factored that in, I think that we need to be thinking about the fact that at least for this round, that it's not under consideration because we haven't forecasted it.
It is not part of this AB 1200 package. We would have to come back with another AB 1200 if for some reason we agreed to another reopener and some sort of additional settlement that's done with another part of the organization. But there's also other factors in addition to that, that each package has something a little different in it. And so I do want to say that out loud.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions, I'll ask for a motion.
I'm of approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. And, sorry. Well, wait, there it is.
Who seconded it, sorry?
I did.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Thomas Block. I always write it down too, so just in case. You can always call.
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you for staying so late. Have a good Thanksgiving. All right, six eyes. Tentative agreement.
Thank you. In front of you is the signed tentative agreement between NTA and the district. I want to appreciate the collaboration between NTA and the district where so we were able to resolve the collective bar agreement that takes us through June 30th of 2025. Yes, June 30th of 25. We will be exploring having a full reopener very soon. But the highlights of this tentative agreement is clarification language within the articles listed seven, eight, and 13. But the bulk of the tentative agreement is highlighting the 1.75 ongoing salary schedule increase retroactive to January 1st, 2024. A 1.75 one-time payment based on the 24-25 salary schedule. And again, as I mentioned earlier, the compensation will be applied to those who are in, currently employed within the district as of the signing of the tentative agreement, which was October 22nd of 2025.
Thank you. We have, before we bring it to a vote, do you want, do you have a comment, question? Okay, before we bring it to a vote, we have a public comment. Ms. Parks?
Mr. Hill, you just said everything I was going to say about the two o'clock.
Okay.
Concerns about, you're being aware.
Thank you. Yeah, I think most of us have had discussions about it. All right, so may I have a motion for 12.3?
I'm of approval.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Thank you. And vote? Okay, sorry, we're going to have to do it. I pushed it once and it just flipped like three times. So let's just do this again. Thank you. All right. Student member gone.
Are you going to break dance?
That'd be a $2 fine.
Are you going to break dance?
Employment contract for Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, CBO. We were, we are being asked to approve this as well as I want to read the terms for this. Is there anything that you would like to add, Superintendent or Assistant Su- Williams, before I, we go any further?
Yeah, just as a reminder, we did put a revised contract with the date in a correction to one board that was on the contract. You see the original contract that we originally posted, the agenda posting, and you see the new revised one. You're voting on the revised contract.
Which has the date of January 12th and the number, I believe, is corrected to three. Okay. And it's, that number three is, has to do with the early termination. It's severance. It said like the number, I don't know, if it was the number three and the word 12 or it was the other way around. So it now coincides, they're both three. Okay. So I'm going to read the terms out loud. Annual salary of 250,000 for a work, number of workdays of 224. Health benefits on the same terms as other certificated management. Early termination severance of three months. Considered a certified, yeah, cer-, I'm sorry, certificated management position. Degree stipends will be the same as other certificated management employees. Commencing with the 25-28 school year, if the board approves the increase in compensation for other certificated management employees, the Assistant Superintendent shall receive the same compensation based on satisfactory performance.
Just a quick comment.
Yep.
This position is not a certificated position, this is a classified position as far as Cal PERS goes. However, it is entitled.
The same things that we, we've put all assistant superintendents on a similar kind of contract, so on a positive work year versus a, like a 260. We do have different options to how we can do it. This district has been doing it though with a positive work year here in recent years for us to be able to calendar. And that will be noted in Cal PERS.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, yeah. Member Hill?
And then just to clarify, in the, in the contract, it's my, well, it's actually just right here. It's a three-year contract or is it a two-year contract? Two and a half year. It's a two and a half year contract.
Correct.
Okay, great.
All right. Any other questions? All right, I will ask for a motion.
I make a motion.
I second.
Okay. Member Agwiyana motions. Member Hill seconds. And please vote. All right, and five eyes. Yay! All right, thank you so much. Woohoo!
I do, our committee members for, um, in the process here for our CBO search. We're excited to welcome Victoria and I'm excited to spend the next couple of days with her at the CBO Symposium down south through Casbo. She will be there as well and so we plan on spending some time together as we listen to the prospects as we move forward for the financial landscape that's going on between Casbo School Services and FICMAT, who will be the main presenters.
Great. Okay, we are off to old business, Resolution 2025 dot 26 dot 09 declaring an emergency that requires procurement of construction services for emergency abatement and repair, awarding a contract for performance of the emergency repair or replacement work without competing bidding and delegation of authority for emergency action. Any comments? Member Hill?
So can I just make a suggestion since what President Jones said was a mouthful? It's like, can, can we just like eliminate this whole resolution stuff and just call it the HVAC update? But then it would be appreciated if we could have Mr. DeFraidis here to give us some, some details. Is that possible?
So the details are actually updated and I think I can speak to them if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, so I mean, in this situation, it's fine, right? But I'm just saying going forward because he's boots on the ground, right? So we want to.
Right, but you have a grid before you that will continuously be updated?
No, I, I know. But, but my, but there, there could be issues, right? Questions that, that he may be privy to, right? And so, and by the way, he's, he said, I know that there's some people that don't always like my salty language. So let's call it, he's the back to Pat. So, so he's the person who said, I'm the accountable one, so I would like to hear updates from the accountable one.
That is fine. I'd like to be able to move this up further though on the agenda because he does work a very long day.
Yeah.
And I'm really concerned about the hours.
Well, so then let's move it up.
Okay. So with that, I will move it up underneath my superintendent's report if that's okay.
Okay, and then just have him be.
So it's earlier in the agenda, just so we can really get through it.
Yeah, and then just have him be available. Yeah.
Because in many cases, you may not have any questions.
And I think in terms of me reading it, I can just write, read Resolution 2025 dot 26 dot 09 declaring an emergency that requires procurement of HVAC, of HVAC.
But are we even required to say that language? Yeah, so then let's just, it's just an HVAC update.
Okay, I like that even better. We just know we have to vote on it every time. All right, could I have a motion, please?
Well, I had a speaker, didn't I?
Oh, I'm sorry, you might have. I'm still looking at the voting panel. Sorry, I didn't see the little hand.
I'm just curious, there's been no work on this?
There has been work on this. They've actually been walking the sites, so the sites for Kennedy and, and where they got those. And the middle school have been walked. Work will commence in December. They'll start doing the installation of the units at that time. The units have also been ordered so that they're coming in and they have been getting their teams together to make sure that they are out there. We've met with the project manager from Veragee, so there was a team meeting on that. So there's been a lot of work that's been put in place to be able to get things moving and get things organized so that it will go smoothly and they can actually just get to the work.
Well, thank you. That's helpful information. I was under the impression that, that the first part had been ongoing and, and that I expected maybe some, some of the, some of the HVACs had been updated since the last time we.
They've not been updated since the last time. There's actually a lot of pre-work that has to be done once you actually sign the thing and that was one of the reasons for us to want to be able to push an emergency resolution forward.
Thank you.
We knew that it was going to take more time.
All right. May I have a motion, please? I'll make a motion. And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you so much. Please vote. Excellent. All right. For one, four eyes, motion passes. One, no. Okay. Moving on to 14, consent agenda personnel items. I have two items for public comment. So Ms. Parks, can you come up and just do both 14-6 and 14-7 together, please?
Good evening. On February 18th of this year, as a cost-saving measure, the board voted to eliminate 17 full-time equivalent positions. One of those was an assistant principal position that directly impacted the middle school administration. Yet according to the background on this agenda item, the 14.6, just two months later in April, the district posted a position titled Dean of Teaching and Learning. This is not an NUSD position currently for the middle school. And the board approved the hiring as a dean, that's all the pal said was dean. Newark Unified has only ever had dean of students or secondary dean positions, which is supported by the 2014 job description I received today from HR. I think it is important that the waiver before you this evening needs to reflect the correct position title. A position held at both the high school and junior high previously eliminated, both of them were eliminated by budget cuts. This current position is currently being funded by the middle school SIPSA. I noticed that the credential waiver for this position was signed by one of the district's temporary guest administrators in human resources, not by a permanent Assistant Superintendent of HR or any other permanent employee. This also raises a concern. I hope you will table this item until the position title can be corrected and a permanent Newark Unified employee sign the certificated document. Then moving on to the next document, it is for, it is also a veritable term waiver and this is for the principal position at Schilling. The signature certifying the document is missing and it also has the guest HR directors typed in as on the bottom of the document, but again, there's no signature. And I believe that this also should be signed by a permanent employee, not by a temporary one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone like to pull any items from the consent, personnel consent agendas?
Can we pull those two items?
Sure. All right. So can I ask for a motion on 14-2 for, through, it looks like I got my numbering off. Okay, here we go. Sorry, I was sliding these things around and forgot to renumber. 14-2 through 14-5 and 14-8.
I'll make a motion to approve items 14.2 through 14.5 plus 14.8.
Second.
Thank you very much. Let me get my notes here. Okay, and vote for that, please? Thank you. All right, five eyes. It's so slow. There we go. Okay. All right, and let's see, can we, I'm going to do them individually. 14-6, may I have a motion?
So, hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to explain. So, so per Ms. Parks' comments, I mean, I think it's important that we dot the i's and cross the t's, right? And I do think it's important that, that we have a permanent employee signing off on these positions. So can we, can we make those corrections and then bring it back at the next meeting?
There's timing is when we can submit the waiver and have it retroactively be in place. We are pushing the limits, 90 days, and we are pushing the limit when we could submit the waiver to CTC. So our process is we have to collect all the information, we have to show recruitment efforts, and the board has to take action for us to run it through Alameda County Office of Education, which submits for a request for the waiver from CTC. I'd have to double check to see if bringing this to our December meeting would suffice, but I don't believe it would be.
So in that case, can, can we just get a commitment from a process perspective, right? That, I mean, I think, you know, that, that, because, because what happens, right, is that I know everybody's busy and there's good intentions, but like four years down the road when there's an issue, all of a sudden it's like, well, who is this person, right? And they're not a permanent employee and why, you know, and what, and how was this decision made? So I just want to make sure that we, that we, we dot the i's and cross the t's, so, but I'm, I'm willing to support that for this evening.
So the guest director that signed it, Ms. Hurtado, would suffice for the submission, but I can commit to making sure that I'm signing the documents that would need approval by the board moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we, um, do we need to do these separately or can we do them together? We can do them together?
And just to clarify, that if the signature's not on there, that won't be an issue or is that something that can be added, like post-approval? So like we can approve it pending addition of the signature?
As long as we get approval for the waiver from the board, we can submit. And I could even co-sign the other one as well so that my signature's on it.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. All right, could I have a motion for both of these together then? Okay, I'll make a motion. A second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And we are voting on 14-6 and 14-7. And we... Come on. There it is. Thank you. All right, 15, do we have any non-personal items that need to be pulled? All righty, we are voting for 15-2 through 15-21. May I have a motion?
I'm overly approve, we approve 15-2 through 15.21.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. And vote, please. Thank you, and five eyes. All right, we are now at, um, education committee meeting, committee reports, announcements, requests, briefs discussion. I'm going to start with the LCAP meeting from last week. At the meeting, they reviewed the dashboard data as it relates to the LCAP goals and discussed the current and future expenditures. What is, what is projected to be spent for the 2526 year? They discussed what are the projected over-budgeted items, meaning which items are we going to be over-budget, which ones are we going to be under? So where, where might monies need to be shifted mid-year? Members asked a lot of really good clarifying questions about specific line items. Member, I'm sorry, I should say Ms. Bloom back there was a wealth of questions that were actually really beneficial to the whole group. It was great. What kinds of things, you know, just all kinds of things, what's paid for out of specific line items? And there was, her questions provided a tremendous amount of clarity. It was, it was actually, it was excellent. I appreciated them all. We also, they also talked about, could there come up, could we come up with some kind of like a rating system on what line items in the LCAP are most important to continue with if we lose funding? Then what are the most important things to move forward with? And how would that decision be made? And coming up with some kind of a, a, a good rating system that would help inform next year's LCAP decisions, which we will be moving into year three of this current cycle. Information was given out talking about the extended learning grant monies and what we will be receiving, which is an unexpected, just under 300,000, but 296 something, some change. The next meeting will be on the fourth where they will be discussing how that extended learning grant funds, how those can be used over the next three years. Those are not tied specifically to this cycle, there, it's just for the next three years. So, and Member Aguiano, I'm hoping that maybe possibly you can go to that meeting. I know you're the other member, but I'm at the conference at C in Sacramento. So if you can, great. If not, it's all right.
I'll do all my efforts. I do have a dag de lak at my location, so I'll go ahead and try to be there present.
If you can, great. If not, it's okay.
I'll let Ms. Croce know.
Okay, super. Thank you so much. Member Hill, any updates? Committee meetings?
So two things. So regarding the 7-11 committee, so on December 6th, which is a Saturday, I believe, so we're going to be meeting as a board, it's already scheduled to meet the search firms, the superintendent search firms, but we would like to add some additional time to discuss the 7-11 committee so, and, and issues because I think that we need to get an understanding from the board and a consensus from the board around the priorities so that we can then take the next steps, right? And so, so that was one update. Am I missing anything?
Yeah, no, the whole idea, I think, from our discussion that we had, and it was Member Hill and, and Vice President Thomas, we met with the attorney, we kind of wanted to get some clarity based on some feedback and some comments that had been given by some of our community members and just, I think amongst ourselves, like as we've been going to workshops and learning about things, we want to make sure that we're optimizing what our priority educational goals are, the pros, the cons, kind of the priority list. It will help us with also doing some pre-work, right? Like we might want to go out and do some evaluations or some other things that might go along with it. It will really help guide staff as well as we move forward to be able to make that process go a little bit more seamless. And then possibly maybe putting the 7-11 committee on a little bit of a hold until we kind of get through some of those processes. Does that accurately describing what we talked about? Okay, and so, um, as we're talking about, like, when could we do it? We already know that we've got this facility here on Saturday from, from, from nine until two. And so we thought that would be a good time. I mean, we've already made that commitment for that day. I know your time is precious. I know it's right before the holidays, but we really feel like we can probably get through that and I think I can really help you facilitate that with some more conversation with, with Hill and Thomas.
Great, thank you.
Right, and then, sorry, and then, and then just a general comment. So I'm, I'm not sure about how people in our district talk about this, but in the district where I teach, so we call October sucktober. And it's because we don't have any time off during October. I think that, I think that we have a little bit of time off in our district. And so by the time we're reaching November, everybody's pretty exhausted. And so, but I think, I think everybody's exhausted. And so I just want to thank everybody, right? Teachers, staff, our executive team for all the hard work and wishing you a happy and a peaceful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Member Thomas?
Yes, I'd like to echo Member Hill's, um, hope that we all have a good Thanksgiving and, and get a nice restful week after a real busy October. I did attend the, um, the last ROP board meeting. I'm very impressed with the way ROP is serving our students and, and it's always a pleasure to see how they, how they go after the CTIG state money and are, are taking the pressure off of us to, to fund all the improvements in that program. And, uh, that's it. I was going to also talk about, about December 6th and making sure, I don't think it'll take that long to, to approve of the search firm. And so I think we can spend some constructive time speaking to our, our goals for our facilities. Thank you.
Member Block?
I just want to talk a little bit about the California Schools Dashboard. It's awesome going on there with the new data uploaded and seeing all the progress being made district-wide in terms of academic achievement, English learner progress, graduation rate. It's just really exciting to see a lot of things moving in the right direction and just a big appreciation to staff and families and students and everybody working to make that happen. Looking at that dashboard, chronic absenteeism is our big area of growth. So definitely, you know, the more that we can all work together to get kids to school every day, that has, you know, a knock-on effect on everything else as well. When students are there, they do better academically and they thrive more overall. So the more that we can work together on that, I think the more we'll see continued progress and have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.
Member Aguiano?
Whatever everyone just echoed, I really appreciate everyone that came out, teachers, staff, and also cabinet. And just wanted to reiterate last week, we, Veterans Day, to all our men and women and salute to service for everything that you guys do for our country. Also safe and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you much.
All right, um, yeah, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Enjoy the break. It's definitely well-deserved. Superintendent?
Just a couple of final comments. On the 6th, I'm planning on making it a, a special session for that day, followed by a study session that you would be doing or a workshop perhaps model. I don't know, I, I'm hoping that you'll have a decision that day so that we can work on contracts and then put that contract on the 10th so you can approve it and keep our timeline going. It's important that we do keep the timeline moving. We'll make sure to reach out to those other search firms and ask them to consider applying here in our district for an interview. So, we'll make sure that we take care of that as well. And then I think just with regards to the documents and some of our guest educators occasionally are signing off on forms for us that are helping us process some of the work. It is still being overseen by our assistant superintendents. I will say I'm really grateful to have both Mike and Karen on the team. They have been working diligently to be able to help and improve our systems. We are bringing more technology in to be able to, be able to streamline things, to be able to pull down reports. And I will tell you, this school year feels so much more smoother than last year. I'm really grateful for all of you and I'd just like to take a moment to thank, thank our entire community for your continued support, partnership, and the heart for our students and schools. Your encouragement and involvement make a meaningful difference every day, especially during times when many families are facing challenges and uncertainties. As we enter into Thanksgiving season, I wish each of you moments of peace, reflection, and warmth with the family and friends who bring joy to your life. It may, this remind us of the strength that we share as a community and the kindness that connects us all. Truly with gratitude, it's been such a great year already to start off with. I know we still have a lot more work to do to be able to plan for the next superintendent, to get things ready for that individual, to be able to step in and to keep, keep things moving. It was an exciting conversation tonight to be able to talk about a lot of the data and systems that we're working on for student improvement. Some of it's hard to sit there and look at, right? Because we're not doing so well, but we can do better. And we also have seen improvements through some of our other assessments that we're using. And most importantly, I really think our teachers are very interested in wanting to have those data conversations on what's happening. There's really great work happening in each of our schools individually that I really want to thank all of them for their time that they're putting into and their care. I truly do believe that as we bring in the additional tools that they need, that they've been waiting for, and with their support, as we look at those tools and bring those forward, it's going to help to strengthen our education system right here. And with regards to the tutorial program, I still think there's a need to have something there, but I think we also need to identify which programs need to be in that as we move forward, which ones are the essential programs and which ones do we want to put a focus on, on having plans for tutorials or catch-up on whether it's math and language arts. I'm also concerned about the article that we all, that, that was shared earlier by Member Hill with regards to the fact that I think we're taking a step backwards as society. And it's not just happening here in Newark, it's happening across the entire US. And so it's not just our problem, it's a problem in what we're doing educationally. And we've got to address it and we've got to hold that high standard because that's what's separating us from those internationally that are moving ahead of us. And they are putting an emphasis on mathematics and on sciences and on engineering. And they're doing that additional critical thinking and problem solving and it is a priority. The reward system is getting to do some of the extra things that they get to do, but they don't get to do it just automatically, they have to actually earn it. And so this is going to be a mind shift change to be able to really gear up. We are done with the pandemic. We are trying to remove every single picture that we have with masks. We want to be able to move forward, we want to stay focused. And it's time that, that we're already seeing those differences happening here in some small steps that we've taken here in the past two years. And I just want to thank all of you for your guidance and I want to thank our entire school district for all the work that they do. There's some really great work happening. We look forward to bringing back some other interesting reports that I think you're going to find of real interest. Member Thomas, I really want to thank you for spending some time with me today and the work that you're doing on the master schedule. Extremely critical that we get this right for 26, 27. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, at 10:30, not, it's 10:40, I adjourn the meeting. And with that, at ten thirty-nine, it's ten forty, I adjourn the meeting.